We're going to have a brief moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Benson. Please stand. Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Item 5D, Human Resources for Safety Footwear, we'd like to be deferred. I don't know if we have a date for that deferral, a date uncertain, thank you. And the additional changes for consideration is item 9A, County Clerk amending the 2023 polling places for the 2025 regular local election, be moved from introduction of resolutions to the consent agenda as item 5H. This will also require a suspension of the rules for the final adoption at introduction.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any changes? Okay, so the request is for a deferral on item 5D and to have the single hearing on the county clerk polling places item. Is there any objection among commissioners to voting for those as one motion to adopt the agenda? Seeing none?
Just a question.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Was that going to be a one-time hearing or is it, I thought it was, or did you say it was going to move to the consent agenda?
I believe, I believe it's both, actually. So the request is to not have the usual two hearings to suspend the rules and then to move it to the consent agenda.
And just fold it in there, okay.
Yes.
All right, just one.
All right. Objections to that? Thank you, Commissioner. All right, seeing no objections, all those in favor, please signal in the affirmative. Yes? Actually, I don't know if we had, do we have a motion? I'll make a motion. A second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. All those in favor, signal in the affirmative.
All right.
Yes? And seeing none opposed, the motion is adopted for the agenda. Next up, I have a few brief statements to read into the record here and we'll vote on these. I offer the following statement regarding the closed meeting held on August 19, 2025 at 2:00 PM. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held on August 19, 2025 were discussed at the closed meeting, and I need a motion for approval and it will become part of the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, Commissioners? All right, all those in favor, please signal in the affirmative.
Aye.
Yes? Any opposed? Passes unanimously, and then we have a second closed meeting statement. I move that the county attorney be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in the closed meeting held on Tuesday, August 19, 2025, within the parameters set by this commission in the closed meeting agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Seeing no discussion on the motion, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative, yes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We will now move on to the public comment section of our meeting. Each person will have two minutes and you'll be alerted to your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you're speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. And in order to maintain order and decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone present, please adhere to the two-minute time limit. If the conduct of the presenter violates the rules, they may be subject to removal. Javier, could you please call the names of the speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we have a total of six speakers, all in person. If you can please line up at the podium when your name is called. We will start with Debbie Thomas, followed by Carolyn Hadamio, followed by Dr. Geraldo Cianello. Debbie Thomas, followed by Carolyn Hadamio, followed by Dr. Geraldo Cianello.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Debbie Thomas, and I am known as Addison's mom. I am speaking on behalf of my son, who is no longer here. I am the creator of Eternal Angel Poster Projects. They're trying to put a, I've got a sample video and they were trying to put it up for me of all of the things that I've done over the past year and a half or so, which include a lot of things with, with the county and keeping them alive. I'd like to thank Lisa Sidio White. And as you all know, we have a rotating poster project in APS schools. I was the planner for the Texas Picture Documentaries, took a couple trips around to recruit. So I am here tonight to request approximately $2,000 to mail approximately 300 posters to Washington DC. I have possibly three, at least two very large collaborations with The Trail of Truth and with The Lost Voices of Fentanyl. They are the two largest 501(c)(3)'s in this fight for Fentanyl. My project is a people project, it's paid for by the people. And I feel like just asking for the shipping to get my posters to Infro DC so that they can be seen by thousands of people coming up, starting September 27th, the first week in October, and the third week in October would be a great benefit to our communities. And, you know, I've got angels from all over the country in my poster project now. It started out a year and a half ago and it's, it's hundreds now. So I would really appreciate being able to show them in DC during our rally time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thomas. Appreciate you being here and always appreciate seeing your, your work out in the community at the many events that I've seen you at, and I'm sure there are many, so thank you very much.
Carolyn Hadamio, followed by Dr. Geraldo Cianello, followed by Gloria Faber.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me the time to speak today. My name is Caroline Hadamio Salazar, and I am a grieving mother as well. My child passed away, my adult child passed away five years ago from Fentanyl poisoning. I have started a Trail of Truth New Mexico chapter here, and we are having a very large event on August 30th at the Santoario de Chimal. I have been blessed in being able to have this outreach with about 20 different agencies that are going to come and offer resources and support to the surrounding communities. And I brought a flyer, I will be attending Trail of Truth on September 27th. So today, I'm asking you to please take in consideration in helping sponsors or helping us with at least $1,000. We have everything else covered but for meals and possibly our rental while we're in Washington DC. This is my first time, so I'm very nervous, but I do advocate quite a bit. I do, I do a lot. We offer grief support to those families that are grieving just like mine. And we try to offer enough support and I've been very blessed to be able to help people decide if they want to go to rehab or not, like that same day. And then I have friends that are willing to take those people in and if they're ready that day, we can get them into rehab or counseling or whatever it may be. We also offer grief support to, mothers call me all the time and they ask me how I do it, and I tell them it's my faith in God. We have to have faith in God. I mean, that's the only way I can live because I don't know how else I'd be able to live every single day, knowing that my son is no longer here because of the drug epidemic that we face. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your story this evening. And if you'd like to give your handouts to our staff up here, they'll make sure that they get distributed to all of us. And thank you for sharing your story.
Dr. Geraldo Cianello, followed by Gloria Faber, followed by Ari Herring.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners and County Clerk. I'm a naturalized American citizen and immigrant doctor and minister. As you know, I waited nine years to become a naturalized American citizen, and thank you for serving. I'd like to share a letter, letter from Kristin Noem, Secretary of Homeland Security, but you may have heard it already, if not, here it is to inform us all of election integrity. I am writing to inform you about the Department of Homeland Security's progress in optimizing the systematic alien verification for entitlement or SAFE program. Specifically, the DHS progress is verifying the US citizenship for voter eligibility purposes in support of Executive Order 14248, preserving and protecting the integrity of American election. First, we have eliminated charges for state, local, tribal, and territorial government agency to use the SAFE program. Second, we have updated the program to allow users to create queries in bulk rather than individually, providing a template with the standardized data fields. Required information for bulk case and entries include the first name, last name, date of birth, and one of more of the following enumerators. Social Security number, alien number, and or citizenship or naturalization certificate number. The significant change allows states to upload the voter, their voter rolls in bulk, streamlining the verification of US citizenship for individuals registered or registering to vote in a state. Finally, we recently launched an enhancement that allows the SAFE program users to create cases using your social security number as the applicant numerator. So I encourage all state and local governments to register for the SAFE program to ensure lawful voter eligibility verification. Sincerely, Kristin Noem. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cianello.
Gloria Faber, followed by Ari Herring, followed by Jim Tilly.
Hello, Chair Levis and the Commission. I've met a few of you, and for those of you who I've not met, my name is Gloria Faber. I'm the Executive Director for New Mexico Youth Soccer, and I also have the pleasure of serving as the Vice Chair of the Burnley County Youth Sports Commission. I'm here today to thank you for supporting the Mesa del Sol project and making it a capital outlay priority. It's a project that's dear to my heart. We've been working in conjunction with the Burnley County Youth Sports Commission, but I think everyone realizes the importance of this facility to New Mexico for a lot of reasons. New Mexico Youth Soccer is a state governing organization. We serve 23,000 coaches and players across the state, but in the Burnley County and Albuquerque area, we serve about 6,800 kids. And we've run out of places to play and places to practice. And we're having trouble growing our sports just because we don't have the facilities to accommodate the growth. I work side by side with Bill Blair. He is the Executive Director for Yaffle Football, and he is also the Chair of Burnley County Youth Sports Commission. He also serves a large contingent of youth in our community. He has over 3,000 players that are playing flag football or tackle football and cheerleading. So for, for you, what we ask is that you keep us a priority on your capital outlay list. This is just the beginning of this project, we're beginning Phase Four, and we have four other phases to finish up. I know that for us, it's community sports that are important, but capital outlay is also important for us for economic impact. The four fields that are online right now have already produced over $2.7 million in direct spend. We hope to have that up to $4 million at the end of the season. So again, I want to thank you for supporting the youth in our community and ask you to keep us as a priority. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Faber, and I'm just going to take a quick personal privilege here to thank you and Mr. Blair for giving Commissioner Baca and I, as well as the Senate Majority Whip, Mr. Michael Padilla, a wonderful tour of the facility. And I don't know about Commissioner Baca, but I was thrilled and excited to see how utilized it was, thousands of kids and families there, and it was really exciting to be there, so thank you.
Ari Herring, followed by Jim Tilly.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Ari Herring. I'm the Executive Director at Rio Grande Food Project. We are a food security organization on the west side of Albuquerque. We've served tens of thousands of, of people since the late eighties. We're here in support of, of funding for The Roots Room, which is included in the capital outlay portion of tonight's agenda. The Roots Room is a key piece of Rio Grande Food Project's shovel-ready community food hub that will be built on our recently purchased 1.28-acre lot that is on Coors just south of I-25, near West Mesa High School. The food hub, we imagine it will really transform the way our community addresses hunger, pairing a free grocery store-style pantry with wraparound services including bill assistance, employment support, and benefits enrollment. It's designed to meet the urgent food needs of our community while also tackling the root causes of food insecurity. So at the heart of this food, of this planned food hub is The Roots Room. It's a dedicated classroom and gathering space directly connected to our urban garden. At this Roots Room, families and neighbors can come together for hands-on cooking, gardening, and financial literacy workshops. Partners can host services and where, and community can connect. It is a place where not, that not only provides knowledge and skills, but also reduces stigma, builds social connection, and strengthens neighborhood resilience. This project will serve as a permanent anchor for education, engagement, and wellness on the west side. So we're really thankful to Commissioner Baca for championing this effort and for considering this investment in long-term community health and food security. Thank you.
Jim Tilly.
Good evening, Chairman Levis. Did I do something wrong? Good evening, Chairman Levis, Commissioners. I'm Jim Tilly. I am the former Chair and the former Vice Chair of the New Mexico, of the Burnley County Youth Sports Commission. I've spoken to most of you privately about Mesa del Sol. Commissioner Baca, I haven't spoken to you, but it'd be wonderful sometime to do that. I've been involved with the Mesa del Sol project since its inception, and I really had a little presentation put together tonight, but, but Chairman Levis and Gloria said it pretty well for me. Want to thank you for, for making us a priority and for your, for your past help. And like to point out that when this project is done, it's already booming out there. It's already getting good use, but when this project is done, it will be the finest multi-sport facility for, for 400 miles. And that's important to, to our kids. We get, we get good recreational impact from this facility, but we also get the opportunity for out-of-town kids to come and play our kids on our turf. And it's, it's a very important thing for, for athletes. Anyway, thank you for your past help, and we appreciate you making this a priority of the legislature.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly, and thank you for serving on our Youth Sports Commission. Appreciate it.
And our last speaker, Zach Hines.
Go ahead, sir.
So I'm over here for my brother and stuff on the five acres in Paharito Mesa that Enrique keeps trying to say is your guys' land and it's illegal for people to be out there, but you guys get permissions for side-by-sides to go have parties out there every other weekend? And I just don't understand how if we own the property, we have to ask you guys permission to be on our property? And then then everything that Enrique is complaining about on this property that is on here, this agenda, the AR 2025, is actually the Carl Hinman's property. I don't have no buildings, I don't have torn apart boats, I don't have torn apart vans. And we have filed multiple complaints about Carl Hinman, and Enrique, his boss, and all of them have done nothing. There's not even a case, like it just goes right under the table. And I want to know why. We had, we went upstairs, we asked for permission to put our animals on the property. We got permission, they told us what to do and everything, and Enrique's like, no, we're going to take your land. We don't care what you have to say, what's right or what's wrong. And I don't get how that's just or American or constitutional or any of that. If we buy the property, it's our property, right? I really wasn't, I thought it was going to be like separate meetings for everything, so I'm a little, I thought they were going to speak first and then us, but that's about all I have to say. He keeps sending us paperwork, but all he does is copy and post things. He doesn't say anything in there that we need to do. He doesn't show us any pictures. He hasn't done anything by the book or by law. He hasn't come on with a warrant, he hasn't come on with anything, just his feelings and what he says is to be true, which is we've caught him on multiple lies already. And that's what I wanted to add. My dad wanted to speak too.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. And, and this isn't really a Q and A, so I don't want to get too, too into the weeds here, but I do want to just encourage you, I believe I saw you talking to Mr. Nick Hamm, our Planning Director. Kim and his staff can definitely get you in the right place, and I've been-
I had his card last time and I lost it, I gotta give back.
Okay, yeah, please, please get in touch with him. And per our staff, you know, you will have due process, the, the right to an appeal, all those types of things. So I just want to make sure that you understand the process.
So far, we've had absolutely no due process.
Okay. Again, it's, it's not a, not a Q and A, but I just wanted to advise you, and I do suggest working with Director Hamm. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This concludes our public comment.
Thank you very much, Javier. Get back on the order of things here. So that takes us to item five, which is approval of our consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you please provide resolution numbers for items 5C, 5F, 5G, and 5H?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 5C is AR 2025-83. 5F is AR 2025-84. 5G is AR 2025-85. And 5H is AR 2025-86.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And just a reminder, we did move that item from the introductory hearing into the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public, and resolutions have been introduced at a previous meeting. Therefore, I move to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Seeing no dis, yes, Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm not clear exactly about the status of the item that the last speaker was speaking to, but I understand that is on the consent agenda as 5F, is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
I would actually, and I don't think this is the time and place of it, and I have had some briefing, I think, of that, or quick, but I, there were issues that were raised that I'm certainly not aware of, and I would just ask the Commission to, to, probably to defer it to a different, to the next agenda so I can get a little bit more information on that, if that would be appropriate to ask.
Okay, so is that a motion for?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that. Commissioners, there's been a motion for a deferral of item F on the consent agenda. Julianne, if I could just clarify here, is it, are we able to just defer directly from consent or do we need to remove it and then defer it?
Technically, you would have to remove it and then defer it, but it can immediately follow the consent agenda once adopted.
Okay, very good. So Commissioner, for now, we'll treat that as a request to remove it from consent, and then we'll defer it, we'll consider that motion right after this. So Commissioners requested item 5F to be removed from consent. With that, is there any further discussion on consent agenda?
And Mr. Chair, if I may, just for clarity of the record, Madam Clerk will need to reissue or resolution numbers.
Yes.
So may I just ask a process question? I've not had one of these pulled off, so I apologize. Commissioner Frank Baca, you and I are learning this together. If this is pulled from this agenda item, I mean, from this agenda, it would come back to this meeting and not a zoning, or you know, not a special meeting?
Correct. It would be to a subsequent administrative meeting.
Okay. What I would like to request, if it is deferred, can we have this come back to the next meeting?
Sure, from my concern, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll address the deferral in just a moment here. It's just been pulled. So at this point, we're just voting on the consent agenda, seeing no further discussion on the consent agenda as modified. All those in favor, signal in the affirmative? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. All right, and that passes 4-0. So now we move to consent agenda withdrawals. I was just thinking, you reminded me about reordering and then we started talking about the deferral. Madam Clerk, could you reissue those numbers for the record?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I will provide all of the numbers for 5C, just for clarity on all of the five items. 5C is AR 2025-83, that number did not change. 5G becomes AR 2025-84. And 5H becomes AR 2025-85.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and thank you for catching me. If I don't see any objection from Commissioners with that little change, just to reorder those, we'll keep the motion as it was. And then now we're on the withdrawals, which would be item 5H. I don't think we'll ask for a resolution number yet, let's, since Commissioner Baca, would you like to make the motion again?
Yes, I would, just per the suggestion of County Manager, defer it, ask that it be deferred to the next meeting.
And Mr. Chair, apologies for interruption. This could be an opportunity as well for a formal presentation by the Planning and Development Services to potentially brief during this meeting and then determine whether you want to proceed or not.
Thank you, and I'll second, and then my next item that I was going to suggest or ask, and I think it goes to Commissioner Frank Baca first. We could hear this item tonight, what I'm, what I'm hearing being suggested is we could hear this item tonight and go through the formal presentation of staff on it. Or you've made a motion, I've seconded it, we can just consider the deferral. You can have time to brief or whatever you need, so it's up to you.
Thank you, I appreciate that consideration. I would request that it be deferred, and I haven't liked the opportunity to visit with staff. And I do want to say for the record that, that our staff has reached out to me on that. I didn't understand there, at that time, there may, you know, there's obviously two sides, but I, you know, they certainly did reach out to me, and just based on what I heard, I would like to get a little more information between now and the next meeting.
Very good. Commissioners, any further discussion? Motion in a second? All right, seeing none, the motion is for a deferral to the next meeting. All those in favor, signal in the affirmative? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, that passes on 4-0, so we will see that in September. And then that takes us now to item seven, our adoption of ordinance and amendments to the county code. Madam Clerk, could you please provide an ordinance number for item 7A?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 7A is Ordinance 2025-25.
And I wanted to just clarify something real quick for the folks in the back, the gentleman that spoke in public comment on the last item that we just voted on. We voted to defer, defer that action on the property in question, and so we'll hear that at our next meeting in September, just, just so you're clear. So there's a little bit more time there for you to communicate with, with the staff on, on those issues, so. Sorry about that, Director Gonzalez. So this is going to be item 7A, Industrial Revenue Bond for Corazon Energy Storage. Before we get into the presentation from staff, we will hold a public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, we do not.
Thank you very much, Javier. And with that, Director Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oops, that's on. As you said, yes, this is our final adoption of the Corazon Energy Storage Project with an IRB. Once again, IRBs are an economic development tool that's used for the commercial development and job creation and provides certain tax relief, in this case, personal property tax relief. And but for the IRB, the project couldn't move forward. We're talking again about the Corazon Energy Project, which is a battery energy storage system. And it stores energy that comes off the Western Spirit Line from PNM, which is majority of the state's renewable energy in the wind projects and other renewable energy projects and will be stored there to be able to provide power as PNM needs that. Just to give you some context of how much storage is there, it could pretty much power half of Burnaleo County for four hours when deployed. So providing a lot of grid stabilization and stabilization for companies that are worried about energy stoppages. There has been some public engagement through the process and the neighbors are happy about it. And they are also will adding this type of infrastructure into the area will encourage other growth into the area and more job creation as well. So this IRB is for 30 years. And again, it's only for equipment only. So they will continue to pay their real property taxes. And we will collect a pilot on the, a property piece. They'll start in 2026 and begin operations in 2027 of Q4. And plan to have 40 to 70 construction jobs during the construction period. And have one full-time job that maintains the facility. While, once again, this isn't a large job creator, it does push for site readiness and having additional infrastructure that's needed for additional job creators to locate to the area. So the next steps will be to final approval of the IRB. And we would shoot the closing in the first of December. And my department will continue to monitor and collect pilot payments and making sure that the project operates according to the lease. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Director. And I wanted to mention, I forgot, I forgot to say this at the beginning. I believe this project is located in Commission District Two and sponsored by Commissioner Frank Baca. With that, I would let you make a motion or do you want to start us out?
I would make a motion. I'd like to have just a question and I could make it now or, or after the. So Director Gonzalez, it seems to me, and I, I received an email from somebody on this project, if I'm not mistaken. But I think there was a fundamental misunderstanding in terms of the $225 million investment. And I don't know that that was, that was clearly understood by the person who reached out, but could you just clarify that $225 million and where that's coming from?
Yes, Commissioner Baca, Mr. Chair, the $225 million represents the private investment into the project and to purchase the equipment and, and ready it. So that's not a bond insurance that the county is providing, only providing tax exemption on the personal property, which is a smaller amount.
Thank you. And I, you know, I have been briefed on it. I've actually taken a drive out to the site and it's right near adjacent to a PNM power plant, the existing plant. It seems lots of different possibilities, opportunities to supply our energy in a, in a more environmentally sound way. So yes, I do support it and do move approval.
I'll second. Commissioners, will open up for any discussion or comments? Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gonzalez, I've spoken with you about this, but can you clarify? My, my hesitancy on this is is why other IRBs have not passed. And that's because of the lack of evidence of, of strong economic development. Actually, we've had other IRBs with much more evidence of strong economic development that didn't pass. So can you explain how, how this would create jobs in the long term? Because there's one job associated with this, I believe. And that's, that's my biggest hesitation here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Benson, while there is just one job that's created for this piece, this is adding to other critical infrastructure that our state needs and our community needs with having, being able to provide power to a lot of the other job creators that are looking to come into the state that are powered needing in terms of either advanced manufacturing or warehousing and distribution or those other type items that want to have consistent power and, and reliable power as well. So with knowing that there's this type of power delivery system that can be there to make sure that to deliver power to them, it provides a greater faith into the area of having that infrastructure. And so once again, while it's not a big job creator, it does provide that consistency that a lot of companies are looking to when they're looking to locating into the area as well. And really, as we're pushing on the site readiness as a state with other infrastructure, we need to be looking at power as one of them as well. And having that redundancy aids to that and stabilization of the grid.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Anyone else? No? I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention in my, in our briefing, the Vice Chair and I had a robust discussion about this. And Director Gonzalez was kind enough to come in and, and talk us through it. But I think we both actually shared some of Commissioner Benson's concerns on the surface about this. And now I'm speaking strictly for myself because I don't want to put words in her mouth. But because of that one job, and, and I've been critical of, of other projects where there's a lot more jobs, but maybe much lower paid jobs. So, so I definitely share those concerns about, about that. And where, where I've come around to on this is, is thinking about it is in two ways. One of them, Director just mentioned with kind of the site readiness piece, that I feel like this is the county actually participating in site readiness in a slightly different way, right? We're not putting up capital dollars, we're not putting direct taxpayer dollars into this, but we're incentivizing something that makes our region more attractive potentially to companies that want to have clean energy, reliable energy. And so, you know, being able to stabilize the grid and better utilize the abundant solar and wind that we have. I've been pretty amazed looking at the, the power lines and stuff going down south that have now been fully installed and all the solar and wind. It's pretty incredible. I think we're positioning ourselves very well with renewables. So I see it in that regard as a site readiness investment. And also, maybe more importantly, is affordable electricity. Because like it or not, if we didn't have incentives attached to this, those costs would be passed on to ratepayers, the way I see it, through PNM or whoever else is using this. And one would like to hope that PNM would pass that on to their shareholders, their investors, or now they're going to be private. But I think we all know they're going to recoup that investment from us and the people we represent. So I feel like we're also, to some extent, subsidizing rates, which is probably a good thing in a, in a place where we are, are very strained, many of our folks living in poverty. So I share your concern, Commissioner Benson, and I'm not 100% there. I think for this one, thinking about it from a climate and affordability perspective, I, I agree with it, but I think as we think of our economic development reforms, our, our process that we're going through right now, this is an important one for us to really think about the cost benefit analysis here. And I know you're well aware of that, but just wanted to share that with everyone. All right, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of final adoption of the ordinance, signal the affirmative? Yes? Any post?
No.
All right, that passes on a three to one. Thank you, Director, and I believe you're up next. But first, for item eight A and B, Madam Clerk, could you please provide resolution numbers?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item eight A is AR 2025-86. And eight B is AR 2025-87.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So as I said, Director Gonzalez will be presenting to us about the notice of intent for the Uptown Connect Project Revenue Bond, which is located in District Five. I'm really excited about that, my first sponsored economic development project. So thank you, Marcos. Tell us all about it.
Yes, Commissioner, this is the Uptown Connect Project. This is a project revenue bond for affordable housing. Once again, it's a tool that our department uses to provide tax exemption and access to low-income housing tax credits and the volume cap from the State Board of Finance that essentially makes it affordable for developers to develop housing and offer them at lower rental rates to our workforce housing. Uptown Connect is in Uptown. This is essentially a project with the coordination with the city of Albuquerque and Palindrom Development that will be redoing the transit center in Uptown and creating two towers, one of affordable housing and one of market rate, as well as a plaza area for the the new transportation center and some retail as well. So in total, there'll be 239 units and two oh three of those will be affordable units and the other ones will be market rate. The total project to do everything, the two buildings and the, and the transit center is just a little bit over 115 million. They'll be invested into the Uptown area. This is just a chart of the rental rates with the new hood rates for 2025. And once again, this project, Uptown, it's in Uptown again on Indian School and Louisiana essentially. And there is a whole host of funding that's going to this project from federal raise grants to the city's transit grants and city funds and maybe even some state funds as well in, in addition to private capital. So the term will be for 30 years on this project and will be provide 100% tax exemption. We will collect a administrative fee over that time period. And the next steps will be going to the State Board of Finance to request a volume cap. And then bring it back to the County Commission for final approval. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Director. I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Open up the floor. Commissioner Frank Baca?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know a whole lot about this, but in reading the material provided, I was, I was struck by the sentence that reads, "The plaza will include public art, outdoor and gathering areas, and interactive water feature and a dock park for the community to enjoy." And I, I think these sorts of projects that we're starting to see where they're really including thoughtfulness behind the use of the property for the community and for the residents. I, I, I think it's something that's it's, it's really important to, to support here in Albuquerque as we're looking to not just build housing, but to high-quality housing projects. I think of one in my own district and Second Bravo is similar in this regard. I don't know if anybody's been up to the, the park at the Wind Rock Shopping Center, just as a beautiful outdoor space. And I think to promote and encourage this type of project, quality project, that goes into not just building, you know, the units, but to really include these amenities for the public and the residents to enjoy. I think that is ultimately the goal or what should be the goal, in my personal opinion, of of development here in Albuquerque, to really make a city a vibrant and healthy economic force. So I fully support your project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benson? Nope. All right. I just want to say, again, I'm really excited to have a, a project going on here of this magnitude, and this is such an amazing corridor. It's my neighborhood. I love my neighborhood. So many things going on, so many things to do. Commissioner Baca mentioned Wind Rock Park is right there, Albuquerque, Uptown. They just opened the Park Square, Park Market Food Hall. There's so much private investment and activity going on in this area. And if you would advance, could you advance to the slide with the capital stat? The number of partners involved in this, it really shows the collaboration that has to happen to do these really big projects. So of course, Palindrom is, is leading this development. They've got a pretty good track record of doing some, some very high-quality mixed-use development. But every, everyone from the federal delegation on down, and I believe it was about a year ago, maybe a little over a year ago, Senator Heinrich and Senator Luhon were here, along with President Biden's Infrastructure Advisor, talking about this project, introducing this project. And it really is a huge collaboration between everyone from the federal delegation, the state, and then local entities. Councilor Feeblecorn's been a huge leader on this project and, and here at the county as well. So really excited about this. I think it's a great opportunity to bring some more housing and some more walkability to an already very walkable urban neighborhood. So urge your support. Seeing no further discussion, this is for introduction of the PRB. All those in favor, signal the affirmative?
Aye.
Yes? Seeing none opposed, that passes on a four zero vote. And Director, you're up again with item B, the IRB for the Mesa Stune Film Studio Extension.
Yes, this is the, again, the IRB for Mesa Film Studios. It will be extending the inducement resolution. So once again, IRB is economic development tool, as we discussed earlier, for job creation and provides certain tax exemptions. The Mesa Film Studios project is a actual film studio. It's below six sound stages that's looking to locate in the Double Eagle Airport. And would lease the, the land from the city for 50 years and construct their film studio. The par value is for 186 million. Again, that's a private investment that would be provided to, that would be done for the construction of, of the film studio and provide real and personal property tax exemption. So essentially, we have real property tax exemption because they are leasing the land from the city, which is tax exempt, but then the vertical construction above that they would own would be taxable. And they were exempting a, a portion of those taxes. And the 48 direct jobs that would be created and then from the films that are anticipated to actually lease the space would be a little over 1,000 jobs created by those film companies that would be leasing the studio space. Currently, the as again, the city has entered into the ground lease with Mesa Studios for the project, but the land use is up for discussion with the neighborhood as the neighborhood and the city are entered into a lawsuit as to whether or not the city has authorization to use that Double Eagle space for a film studio. And so this extension that we're asking for is allowing that court process to be played out and then bring back for final adoption and consideration the IRB at that time, once the land use piece has been settled in District Court. And with, with that, we're asking for adoption of the extension with the inducement that's expiring on the 5th of September and having the inducement resolution approved allows the, the production company to aid in their financing of the project by showing some commitment from the county, partially of looking, considering the IRB process. And with that, I'll stand for any questions. I'll note that Harry Relken and Galen from the film, from the film studio are here for any questions as well.
Thank you very much, Director. Commissioners, any questions or motions? Commissioner Barbara Baca?
I have a question, Director Gonzalez. So this is an extension. How long is the extension? I didn't quite catch that.
This extension would be for an additional 180 days.
180 days.
And then should it, we need additional time, we'll come back for the commission's consideration at that point, too.
Just to follow up, on the timeline that you show there of, of concern in, in my district is the, the neighborhood's concern, but I just wanted to state, you know, for my colleagues that this is, I believe that it is in good faith that the county extend this. but I just wanted to state, you know, for my colleagues that this is, I believe that it is in good faith that the county extend this introduction, that its inducement resolution to allow the city and the neighborhood to work out those land use questions and concerns. I hope that they could come to some sort of agreement and settlement, but it is in that litigation. So I feel like it's appropriate for us to extend that, to allow that land use decision-making to occur, and then we will bring it back for our consideration, whether we move forward with the financing. So, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, one point I forgot to add in as well is the state and the city have offered ALITA funds for this project and they are still committed to providing those ALITA funds when the land use case has been settled.
Did you want to make a motion?
I move approval of the extension of the inducement resolution.
I'll second. All right, Commissioners, any discussion? Directors, since you're here and maybe the owners' representatives want to answer this, but just because we're parked here for a second on the film issue, I just kind of want to, I don't have a problem with this underlying question before us, but just kind of a little update, if there is any, on the status of the film industry right now and, you know, how that may affect the viability of this project. I understand that Netflix is pretty active, but it doesn't, you know, I'm just saying this clearly, it doesn't feel like there's a lot of other productions going on, but I may be wrong and just kind of wondering what that means for the economic activity here.
Sure, Mr. Chair. Some points with that is the film industry is still being active in New Mexico. One thing with Netflix locating here and purchasing that facility is it's only for Netflix. So they don't lease it to Amazon, to Apple, to whoever it may be looking, wanting to shoot a show. And then the other aspect as well is that there was the long strike from the writers and from the actors as well, that, as you can imagine, the logistics with getting actors and directors into different spaces has caused this like kind of time warp that needs to be refigured out as people have been committed to different projects along the way. So there was a lot of catch-up that still needs to happen. And we're still seeing a very active space in our film department as well. So I think having a space that is kind of neutral ground where anybody can rent space for whatever project it would be will add to more production happening as well and further being another added infrastructure to our film industry here in central New Mexico. And if Galen or Harry want to add anything else, but I think I covered it.
Okay. All right. Looks like they're giving a thumbs up. So, thank you, Director. Commissioners, any further comments? All right, seeing none. Motion is for the extension of six months on the IRB. All those in favor, signal the affirmative?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a four-zero vote. Thank you, Director.
Okay.
All right. Item nine is introduction of resolutions. All of our resolutions generally require two hearings before final approval, except in cases of a special exemption, like we did earlier tonight for setting some polling places. The first hearing will serve as the resolution's introduction. The public is highly encouraged to review the introduced resolutions and sign up to ask questions or provide public comments to all of us. The following items will be returned at a subsequent meeting for final adoption. So all five of these are related to our capital improvement program and the upcoming second session of the fifty-seven legislature. So first up, we have item B, our twenty-twenty-six capital outlay priorities with Chief of Government Affairs Kathy Court to present.
Thank you and good evening, Chair Olivas, Vice Chair Barbola, who is not here today, Commissioners, County Manager Chavez, colleagues. My name is Kathy Court and I am the Chief of Government Affairs here at Burn Leo County. Before I proceed, I'd like to introduce our interim contract lobbyist Ricky Lee Chavez, who's here with us, and Matt Munoz, who are here to help me answer any questions you may have about the next two agenda items in front of you. The purpose of this agenda item, the first one on my list, is a motion to approve for introduction an administrative resolution establishing Burn Leo County's twenty-twenty-six capital outlay priorities. If you recall, the commission approved on June twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-five the county's twenty-twenty-seven to twenty-thirty-one infrastructure capital improvement program. The purpose of the ICIP is to identify a local government's capital project priorities for the following legislative session. During the process of identifying projects for the twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-thirty-one ICIP, county commissioners identified their top priorities for their respective districts. A few things to consider when reviewing the priorities listed in the proposed resolution. Number one, with over five billion of unspent capital outlay in New Mexico, the legislature and the executive have shown a focus on funding capital outlay projects that are near completion. The Legislative Finance Committee has discussed the problems capital outlay projects face when they are partially funded over several years. Burn Leo County has several projects on the ICIP list with partial funding. Three criteria Burn Leo County can consider when finalizing the capital projects for legislative priority is project completion, prior legislative support, and current legislative support. By prioritizing projects that have years of legislative support, the county shows the legislature that we are committed to completing projects that are a priority of both Burn Leo County and the individual legislator. Highlights of the priorities that you all have requested. We've got three countywide priorities in the proposed resolution. Mesa del Sol for phase four of the eight phases, as our public speakers have mentioned tonight. Number two is Alcentro and Seabold Village for sidewalk and curb ramp issues. And our third countywide priority is roads, identifying projects in South Valley, North Valley, and the East Mountain areas. We have some top public safety priority recommendations. Number one, youth services center for the expansion of an intake and release area. The advanced public safety training center for BCSO and other law enforcement agencies. BCSO technology for law enforcement, Second Judicial District Courthouse improvements, and two animal care projects, one for an off-site adoption and resource center and one for mold remediation. In District One, we've got several priorities. Sandia Ranch near North Valley Center for All Ages, Second Street ADA Sidewalks, Lomas de Atresco Trail Study at Sandoval Baseball Complex, Tohajali Multipurpose Community Center Land Acquisition, Tohajali Asbestos Removal and Waterline Replacement, Perimeter Multi-Use Trail at John Adams Middle School, and the Roots Room, as mentioned by our public speakers earlier this evening. In District Two, Commissioner Frank Baca has identified storm drains and flooding as his number-one concern. Among the identified projects on the list are Sunset Road Phase Two, Barcelona Road Storm Drain Project, Isleta Drain Trail. We also have some road projects on District Two's list, including Isleta Boulevard and housing infrastructure for the Aldea del Rio project. In District Three, we've identified housing, mobile community centers, and urban open space and alleyways as priorities. In District Four, we've identified Raymond G. Sanchez Community Center, Altamont and Paradise Hills Baseball Complexes, Paradise Hills ADA Sidewalks, and some street projects, including Second Street Northwest Alameda to Roy and Fourth Street Ortega Road to Alameda. And finally, in District Five, we've identified Los Vecinos Community Center, Chip Seal of East Mountain Roads, Sedia Ridge Open Space, the East Mountain Sports Complex, and Han Arroyo. Our next steps in this process is that this resolution will come back before you for final approval on September ninth. And if approved, the county and our contract lobbyists can begin meeting with lawmakers about the priorities and start seeking funding commitments. The session is a short thirty-day session, and so preparation is going to be critical to achieving our funding success. With that, myself and my colleagues stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Court. I make a motion for approval for introduction.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbara Baca. Commissioners, discussion, questions? This is where all the money's at. Well, not all the money, but...
I'm going first.
Commissioner Frank Baca, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd just like to acknowledge the time staff has spent with me over the last few weeks to to speak about these projects. When I first saw this list, I was not chagrined, to say the least, I guess, because I had not really been engaged, I felt, in the process. And then I realized it was a list that had been put into place, that was existed and working from that list. But since that time, I, again, staff has spent a considerable amount of time meeting with me. I appreciate Ms. Court and Mr. and Elias and Brian from Public Works and others and talking about it. But what I want to say really in terms of my list and my priorities is that when I first came on the commission, I was told by many people, including people who sat in this, on this hiatus, is that your priority, priority that you're going to hear from your constituency are roads. Roads, 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 that's what I heard. Well, what I realized that that is correct, but it actually goes a little bit deeper. And when I say deeper, and I don't, no pun intended, but I'm talking about drainage, water drainage. And literally, I've seen pictures of pools of water in front of people's homes, and I don't know if it's photoshopped or not, but I saw one with a guy on a boat fishing and seemed like he caught a pretty good-sized fish in his front yard. But what I realize also further than that is that it's kind of a win-win because if you address the drainage issue, you're benefiting that homeowner from many, in many perspectives and contexts, right? But also, they're getting a new road. The bottom line, after the drain's addressed, they're getting a new road. So what I also would like to say is that I do appreciate over the years the investment in my district in terms of parks. And I have a list of those parks. I know it by memory. I can take you down Isleta Boulevard from Los Paredes going north or from Bridge going south and name half a dozen, seven, eight parks. And they're amazing and beautiful, and I appreciate the Parks and Rec Department going back, I think, to when now Representative De La Cruz was head of Parks and Recreation and then going down to Debbie Jo and now Andrea. I'm sure I missed somebody in between that I don't know and never met. So there's been a huge investment in parks and I appreciate that. But in my view, in my view, and I'm glad these lobbyists are here and my fellow commissioners and my county manager, I would really ask in earnest for this commission as an organization to focus on what is a true priority for the South Valley, not something we want, but something we need, which is road improvement and drainage improvement. That is just simply this day and age. It should not be the level of problem that it has been for so many years. So having said that, what you'll see on my list, essentially about the first eight or nine of the items on that list are drainage-related projects that will also improve the road once it's done. What is on there as well are several parks projects. So what I, the question I wrote, I raised is that, and I have spoken to our legislative delegation, I've spoken to many of them over the last two weeks, and so what has been suggested to me, and I'm asking input from staff in this regard, rather than identifying these individual park projects to sort of do what we did in the countywide priorities as number three, which is rehabilitation of county-maintained roads. And so what was suggested to me, what I think is a good suggestion, is to put a one category of how are, you would want to word it, rehabilitation of support for county-owned park infrastructure and lump that together. And that's what my delegation tells me. That gives them some leverage to make sure if they want to give some money, if there was a particular item in their area that they really want to fund, that we can get it in, that we can hold it, the ICIP is there. But for me, the reason I was suggesting this because I wanted to be very clear to my constituents and to anybody else who will listen to me that it is time, it is time to address the roads and drainage problems needed in the South Valley. Period. End of sentence. It is just time to do it. And I'm not saying that hasn't been done. Of course, we have road projects. We had a lot of major road projects. We had Bridge Boulevard and and Isleta Starting and Real Bravo is the state, but the arterial roads and the interior roads simply need attention. So I'm suggesting that lump sum description of those last five projects on the list be lumped into one category of park improvements or something of that nature, and that way it gives our legislators opportunity to do that. And I think that would make the point emphasized to the legislature that this is a priority, that drainage and road projects is a priority. In addition, I did go back and forth with staff in regards to some road improvements where the Condeshire intersection has been described to me as a safety concern, the way it's designed, also described to me as a gateway for further economic development in that area. And I had been, it was on the list, and then I asked it to be taken off and then talking to some of the legislative allegations, they asked that it be put back on the list as a priority. So I would ask that that be put on. Ms. Court, and again, in talking to my legislative allegation, in one in particular, he had asked that what would be added would be a sum of money for lighting, for lighting projects specifically on South Coors. And that is something I've heard about as well, and I'm asking for, and I don't, this number is just coming pretty much up the top of my head, but I would ask that the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for lighting on South Coors, or however it's described, be added to the to the list. I think those are all the changes I want to make. I may be forgetting something. And I would like to say, as Chair Olivas mentioned earlier, the tour of the Mesa del Sol complex was very timely and very effective, and I appreciate the staff taking the time to really inform me and educate me about that because that is a park. It is a Mesa del Sol area that I don't feel has the same needs, level of needs, that the South Valley does. People have lived there hundreds of years. But I will say I have been convinced by the presentation and by staff that that is something that perhaps transcends just simply a park. And it's an investment in our youth, an investment in economic growth and development opportunities. And so I see that as as number one currently on the countywide priorities, I believe. And I told the group that toured us that I would, you know, I would still support it. I think if it was just undermined, I would probably relegate it low, but I get it and I understand it, and I told them I would not oppose that, so I'm not. But I would just like to make those changes to my list and I would just ask the staff to make those changes and I would ask the support of the commission to take that approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And what I'm doing, I see several of us taking notes, but I'm taking notes and in conversation with the county manager on actually all three of the next items. I think we're going to try to collect some input, have some discussion, and then working together, but I'm going to try to have everything and then we can kind of summarize a direction or some direction to the county manager and staff as far as any changes that we might want to articulate here. So if that's good with everyone, we'll just kind of go through, take the comments and such, and then we'll try to summarize some direction on the larger issues. So. Commissioner Barbara Baca, I believe. No? I thought I jumped over you. Commissioner Benson? Okay.
Oh, no, I didn't.
Okay. Commissioner Barbara.
I just wanted to express my thanks to the county manager and to Ms. Court and staff for working with me and massaging, let's say, the priorities that have ended up in this resolution. I think that there are some very, very important ones, one of which I do want to comment on, on the food hub, the Rio Grande Food Project that was spoken about today. There is a food desert in this area. It's south of I-40 and at Coors, all the way west to Tohajali, but down into the South Valley. This food hub is a really important function and we really, it's shovel-ready, one of the issues that we talked about with the legislature of getting, lobbying for funding that can get something on the ground and completed. It's multiple phases, much like these large community parks that we're talking about, but that's a really important one, and I thank you for adding that at my request this past week. So thanks for that. And then the other thing that I would say is that infrastructure for public works and drainage and roads are very important. And then the, um, the other, um, thing that I would say is, is that infrastructure for public works and drainage and roads are very important. And some of these quality of life projects are also very important. And the whole, uh, scheme of this is for, for all of these things. And so you'll see some of these larger parks, um, and planning efforts on my list that I think are, are very important for the full range of quality of life, including, you know, good traffic and good, good roads and drainage, but also, um, Sandy Ranch, very important project to continue in the North Valley, that kind of thing. So, thank you very much, Kathy.
You're very welcome.
All right, Commissioner Benson, you good?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could. Ms. Court, I will ask the, just to clarify, um, and I, Commissioner Baca, Frank Baca, said it very well, why we do these, uh, NDS water. Actually, most of the road problems I have in our district is because of the water. So they do go part and parcel. When you fix the water problems, it cleans up the roads and preserves them. But, uh, and to Commissioner Barbara Baca's point with the, um, quality of life, one of my priorities is also community centers and, and, uh, sports facilities specifically, especially for all the families that are in my district, um, after school programs. But what I, I understand that a few of the requests from our, uh, Parks Department has, have said that, um, the funding, we're, we're good to go. Uh, and so that's not being, uh, pushed up to the top, is that correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Benson, uh, I think I'd like to defer to DSM, DCM, excuse me, Townsend, to explain, um, the situation we're facing with Paradise Hills Community Center and the Paradise Hills Pool, uh, which, uh, staff did not recommend any funding, and there's a reason for that. So, um, uh, DCM Townsend, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Benson. It is essentially that we need $12 million, probably more at this point, and we don't have any. And with the new direction that the capital improvement plan is taking and the way the state's handling it, we did not feel it was appropriate to put on the list right at this time. It is not going away. We definitely want to do it, but we couldn't spend it in the timeframe and the parameters, that we would be able to, uh, meet the guidelines that Kathy and, uh, DCM Archilata had set forward.
And, uh, North Valley Aquatic Center?
North Valley Aquatic Center is good to go.
Okay, that's, that's what I understood.
Yes, we have, um, everything in place right now, as long as nothing, you know, things could happen, but we have everything we need for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, uh, thank you, Commissioners. So I'm going to go through, through my list here, uh, of some comments and then we'll try to summarize. So, um, I think it's great that we have Mesa del Sol up first. I've been a little skeptical of that project in the past, but I, I really think I'm convinced and I think that that's a, a really key investment in prevention and intervention, right? Keeping youth on the right track, doing good things with their lives, bringing families out together. And they also go out to eat after they're done, right? And they also, you know, go shopping and, and do things as a family, but also in our economy when they're done there. And if this can draw in more tournaments and out-of-state visitors, it's even more of a benefit. So glad to see that. Housing, also front and center to rehab some of our public housing, right? Publicly owned housing is important. And then number three, rehab of county maintained roads, um, also critical infrastructure that I hear about every single day. My only comment, and I don't have a solution on this, I think it's great that we've narrowed our priorities, this is incredible, really, to three. Because I don't know, in the past it's been like 40. So this is, is much more focused, I think, for our lobbyists, for our leadership, for us as commissioners, to really hone in on what are we going to seek this year? And next year might be something different, or it might be another phase of these things. But there's a lot of, uh, text in that section on roads. And, um, I'm wondering if there's perhaps a better way to convey that, um, message in, in just a more, um, easy to, to read way. A question for you, Ms. Court, on number two in public safety. Is this the, the sheriff's top priority a- as far as the, the training center?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, yes, it is. This is what we used to call last year the shooting range, um, but we need a full-scale, uh, facility out there. And this is his number one priority with technology being number two.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Court. And I, I definitely would like to, to, uh, have some further conversations with the sheriff and the, the public works team on that. We just built a training center, didn't we? I, I realize this is a slightly different training center, but we.
May I, it is, um, it, it is a, it is a significantly different training center because the training center we have built now, um, has a, has a, frankly, from a, from a very specific body of work, and that is relative to, um, the use of firearms and de-escalation and having a much more interactive training. And I will just say, uh, one of the reasons that, that, that I'm interested in it, in addition to the issues that the sheriff has raised, is that we've had some access problems with the current facility we have, including for our correctional officers, which is a very big concern of mine. And second, I want more advanced training because I think we all know that one of the biggest areas that we spend resources on is in, um, with our insurance. And my goal is to do as much as we can to lower the risk in terms of how our public safety, particularly, um, our sheriffs and our correctional officers are, are interacting with the public. So we have had a chance to go review it, we've had a number of conversations with the sheriff. He has been very clear about, about his needs. And again, I think as we're thinking about our own futures, that every way we can reduce risk, we should be doing that. The second point, and I'm sorry to merge these, but just, um, since I have the mic, I, the issue that you raised about how we do a good job or a better job of conveying our messages, we look at this document as something that gives us direction. What we present and prepare for our, um, legislators is a very different document and one that we try to make very simple. We used to give people a book this thick that had the name, I mean, it was, I mean, we still, we can do that as background, but now we give them a very nice, tight, um, three-page pamphlet that then has the ability to give people the background in areas that they're interested in. And I, and we will continue to refine that. I know it's something we need to get better at in terms of making sure we're communicating not just our priorities, but very clearly the implications of those priorities.
Thank you, um, Madam County Manager. And I, I, I don't, I, I know that's very true, and I, I saw the booklet last year, very well done. And I, I just still think there's maybe some room for, even for me to be able to consume this a little bit better.
Yeah, clarify.
But I understand what you're saying. And, uh, to the sheriff's credit, uh, he did reach out to me. I, I need to reach back out to him to set up a tour, um, and actually get some better understanding on the, the public safety training center. I would hope, I, my understanding is that the conditions at the existing range and places are, are pretty bad. I would think they're pretty bad for everybody, meaning it's a city-owned facility and their, uh, officers are using it too. And so it would be wonderful to see, uh, the county play a leadership role in, in building this new facility, but actually have a partnership with the city, uh, with a financial contribution, the, the whole thing that, that goes with that kind of partnership, so that we wouldn't have to do two of these. Because I know that, you know, probably, I, I would guess that the city, uh, is also thinking about upgrades or building a new center for, for their officers. And just because there's not very many officers in the region, I mean, between the two, it's less than 1,500. It would be wonderful, it's probably a pipe dream, but it would be wonderful to see us actually collaborating, sharing that resource that is used by a very limited number of, of people and even add in the, the COs and metro security and all the sort of ancillary groups. It's still not very many people, so. One can dream and, and I'll address that with, with the sheriff as well.
And I, and I will take that to heart. I understand the, the direction that you'd like us to work in. Thank you. And I'll, I haven't talked to the, uh, the, um, uh, city manager about it in a while, so I'll make sure I add that back to my regular list. Thank you.
And then the last one on public safety for me is animal care. Love both of these facilities and, and I recognize the need. I'm just wondering if we can wordsmith this in a way that this can be one, that would give us the flexibility to use funds wherever they were most prudent or most expedient, right? If we have an opportunity, we need to do something, we need a little bit more from the, uh, improvements to purchase a new site, or maybe it's vice versa. And because I think they really go together, it's a system, it's not, you know, these are connected facilities. The staff are going to be shared between them. And I think that that would also be easier to explain to legislators and, uh, get them to see that this is a community-wide benefit, regardless of where they, where they live, or where they represent, I should say. I wanted to give also a, a very quick shout-out to the urban open space since, uh, Madam Vice Chair is not here. But, um, these are, are popping up all over her district. I had the chance to go out and visit one of these that, uh, the county helped fund. And just a, a wonderful community space, bringing people together and using an unused space. So this is, uh, very much, uh, money well-spent to, to revitalize our, uh, aging neighborhoods. And then, um, I believe it's the last thing I have, is just a slight adjustment. And I know Ms. Court already knows about this because we were, we were talking today, uh, the Sadio Ridge Open Space. We had a, a wonderful community meeting, I think DCM Townsend was, was there. We had a huge turnout, lots of people from the East Mountains out there, uh, talking about this closed open space. And so this money would help us, uh, to do phase one of opening that, so totally support this. But I think we're, we're looking at refining the ask to 300,000 from what it is now based on, uh, the master plan that's, that's working its way through the process. So I believe that is, um, my comments. So Commissioners, if, if I may, and, and County Manager, feel free to jump in here. The direction that, that I heard at this point is to take a look at countywide number three, to possibly refine that a little bit. Also look at public safety number five and six, the animal care, to see if there's a way we could condense those. And then from District Two specifically, uh, we had a request, Commissioner Baca, feel free to jump in if I'm misspeaking here, to condense basically items 12 through 17 into a District Two Parks category. To add in Condisher Road intersection and then add 500,000 for Coors Boulevard South lighting. Did I capture that? Okay. And then lastly, in District Five, to reduce the D O Ridge to 300,000. Anything I missed? Okay, uh, yes, Commissioner Baca?
Not that you missed, but I, I, I just want to support your comment about the animal care facility. One of the first things I did was when I came on board to take a tour of the facility, it's in my district, and just impressed by the dedication and the passion of our employees over there, the volunteers that are there, the, I mean, they really do a, a great job and, and they're just, their space is so tight, there's so many. And I said, well, can't you bring in a, a storage building? They kind of laughed and said, well, let's go see the storage buildings that we have out there. So it kind of maxed out that side. And I understand there may be some opportunities for properties out there, and I think your idea combined is a great idea and, and gives us some flexibility to really do something, um, to improve that facility. It, you know, they, I, again, I can't say enough of the dedication of our employees over there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to also, um, point out with the request for the lighting for Coors, that, um, when we were doing our speed study test, we discovered that Coors was the deadliest street in the nation for pedestrians. So, um, yeah, absolutely support adding more lighting. Coors goes through three of our districts, uh, the two, Commissioner Baca's and myself. And, um, yeah, it needs to be safer, so lighting, great addition. Thank you.
Madam County Manager, any comments or questions?
No, I'm, I think we've got the direction. What I want to request is I know on the other two items that we're going to, you know, maybe cogitate on them a little bit because they're a little more complex. I did want to suggest that we move forward with this item because I'd like our lobbyists to, you know, start lobbying. And, um, and the second thing I just wanted to say is that, you know, we learned a lot this last year. I know, I, when I say we, I mean me. We should probably be more, uh, more specific. And that is that, um, we, as we were meeting with legislators, uh, they all had very different ways of looking at these issues, very similar to the way that you do. Some would absolutely understand that the animal care system is a system. So irrespective of where the, the adoption, you know, components are, that it's still one system. Others will only fund what's in their district. And so the reason I point that out is that we want to take all of the input that you've given us, clean it up, and then si- as we're sitting with each, uh, person and as you are, you know, being as flexible as we can to make sure that we can maximize, um, the, you know, the, uh, capital outlay that we're able to attach to these, um, these projects. I, to tell you the truth, I was a little surprised that people were not, that, that some of the legislators were so, um, boundary-specific. And, uh, and the other thing that feedback I got is that we were in the game so late last time that we were really bringing things to people that are, to some of our legislators that they hadn't even had a chance to think about. Like, we'd go into their office and they'd already said yes to a bunch of other folks. So we want to be at the front of the yes list. So with that, um, you know, we, we will make sure that the, um, updated information is shared with all of you prior to us making it public. And that way, if there's any tweaking that needs to be done, that is more language-specific or you think will help people understand better, would, would be easy enough for us to do. Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. I don't know that we do, does anyone have, do we need a vote on that, um, direction? I feel like we have some good consensus here on that, and it's coming back to us again. So I think, uh, I think we're good if, if there's no objection from the commission. So with that, uh, I believe we have a motion in a second. We've given some direction and we'll see this again in two weeks so that you all will be able to get started early. With that, all those in favor, signal the affirmative, yes?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes a four-zero vote, and that takes us to our next item, which is our legislative policy priorities for the next session.
Again, Kathy Court, Chief of Government Affairs. I've got my PowerPoint up now, so let me. So, um, today, uh, the motion is to approve for introduction an administrative resolution establishing Burnaleo County's House Bill Two and policy priorities for the 2026 New Mexico Legislature. And before I kind of go through these slides, and I'm going to go through them very quickly, but, um, your resol- the resolution, the proposed resolution in front of you is your resolution from last year for the first session of the 57th Legislature. So, um, what staff is recommending are a few modifications to last year's, uh, resolution because this is a continuation of that 57th legislative session. A second session, as, as I've mentioned, is a 30-day session, so it's very short. So basically, um, we worked from last year's resolution to provide you some comments and feedback on what you accomplished with this resolution from last year and some, um, possible modifications that can be made going into, um, this next session in 2026. So, um, first and, and foremost, on, on your slide here are the House Bill Two priorities that were mentioned in last year's resolution. And, uh, these are all the priorities this commission had and what the outcomes were for each of these priorities. So obviously, um, housing production was a very big win. There's $150 million allocated to housing across the state. Our community schools last year on our resolution, they did receive 6 million. For, uh, community schools and family engagement initiatives, including 400,000 to accredit community schools. Um, in, in the, in terms of behavioral health, this was on your priority list last year. 100 million, um, was allocated to a behavioral, behavioral health trust fund. And millions more for regional planning, which is currently underway. The Office of the State Engineer, we did have a, a mention of this. HB 137 passed and provides funding for treating brackish water to reduce the state's dependence on our freshwater resources. HB Two actually has 40 million for development and implementation of HB 137. We also prioritize state road, uh, and more money to our roads. And 65 million was allocated for road maintenance statewide with 10 million for each district. New Mexico DOT and, uh, 8 million for roadway beautification projects. The liquor excise tax funding formula was on our. The liquor excise tax funding formula was on our priority list last year, not much of a change there, it actually failed in the session. What lawmakers did do is increase from 3 million to 2.5 million the amount to DFA in order for it to administer the grants that are made possible by the liquor excise tax funding formula. In terms of public safety and criminal justice, last year you had a lengthy list of what you were supporting come out of that legislative session, and basically lawmakers wrapped many bills into one crime bill, I've listed them for you here on the slide, don't really want to go through all of them, but they're listed for you. And HB Two, our House Bill Two is our actual, and I should have explained this before, House Bill Two every year is the, is the bill that actually funds New Mexico. So HB Two designated 6 million for improvements, repairs, security infrastructure at court facilities statewide, and 950,000 for IT hardware and software for courts statewide, and 5 million to upgrade remote and hybrid judicial proceedings across the state. My team is always looking for these, if these funds are allocated in a grants, in kind of a grant program, my team, our grant writer is actually really honing in on those state agencies, making sure we, we see those grant opportunities as they arise. In terms of healthcare services on the resolution last year, what came out of the legislature, HB One did establish the Behavioral Health Program Fund to provide services and programs to behavioral health. It also transfers 1 billion from the general fund to the newly-created Behavioral Health Trust Fund. SB Three created the Behavioral Health Reform and Investment Act, and so right now, our Dr. Lindstrom is actively engaged in the process of creating a regional plan in order for us to be able to tap into the millions of dollars that was allocated in HB Two for this purpose. HB 571, Building Housing Communities Act creates a program to designate a municipality that is working to increase housing affordability and accessibility as a building New Mexico community. HB 171 amended the Pharmacy Act to provide that certain licensed custodial care facilities may acquire and possess dangerous drugs, including controlled substances, to be used for addiction withdrawal and management purposes. HB 174 amended the Healthcare Purchasing Act to require group healthcare coverage to reimburse community-based pharmacy providers for the ingredient or wholesale acquisition cost of prescription drugs plus a dispensing fee. In your resolution, your proposed resolution, it has a lot of markups, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, our markups are really just to kind of offer you some suggestions for maybe how we might want to reword the same priorities that were listed last year. I stand for any questions on the actual resolution, I've got my very handy-dandy interim contract lobbyist here to also assist me if I need them. And just so you know, September 9th, we're planning to bring this back before you for final approval, and that way, again, we can get started on reaching out to all of our lawmakers and have everything pretty much set before that 30-day session happens, because it's going to be fast, fast and furious. So I stand for any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Court, and I just wanted to say before, well, first I'll make a motion for discussion purposes. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. And then first off, I just wanted to say, before we jump into discussion, thank you for getting these out so early to County Manager, CIP staff, because in the past, you know, I think my first year, this was a December item, so we are way ahead of where we've traditionally been, so thank you. And then I just kind of wanted to give everybody a heads up before we jump into full discussion, which I think we should have, it's my intent to make a motion for deferral to the second meeting in September on this item, to give us a little extra time to work through this, but I'm not going to make that motion right now, if we want to just go through, talk about this, see how we feel, and then we can go back there and see how we feel about that. Commissioners, open up the floor.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yeah, I appreciate when you make, I will support a motion for deferral to give us a little more time. I mean, I think that this is, I really appreciated the synopsis that you gave us on what occurred at the last session, I didn't have that when I was, when I first took, set eyes on this, and I was concerned that it was a rehash of our 2025 resolution, and a lot has happened, as we know, at the federal level, a lot has happened, you know, during the last legislative session, when we wrote that resolution for the 2025 session. So there, to me, the red line version that we have as part of this doesn't quite do that, if we, doesn't quite update it enough and make it relevant enough to the conversations that we've been hearing. For example, the interim committees of the legislature have been talking a lot about more than what's in our marked-up version here, and I hope that we can listen to what those interim committees have told us, that our legislators are wanting to be, you know, moving forward in January, so that we're in sync, so that we are actually stating that we agree and that our priorities, you know, dovetail with what the legislature is talking about, about water, about crime, about public health, all of those kinds of things. So I don't think this is quite ready, and I would greatly appreciate more time for us to have those discussions, particularly with staff and lobbyists who have been attending those interim committees. I haven't attended any of those, and so I'm not privy to that, but I know, talking to some of my legislators in my district, they're talking about what's most relevant to them, what they are, you know, and the executive, too, you know, there's going to be a special session. They're going to be talking about some detail that we didn't even contemplate, I think, or maybe we contemplated, but that is not included in this red line version that's being introduced tonight. So I definitely think we need that month to get together, to get, you know, particularly in some of these whereas clauses, County Manager's favorite part of our resolution, I'm kidding, but I think that we need to set the tone of the dialogue to the relevance of today's time in the federal cuts that we're dealing with, for example, and why we, why we need to prioritize some action by our New Mexico State Legislature. So I would appreciate that additional month.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca, Commissioner Frank Baca.
Thank you, I think that's a great suggestion, give us a little more time to work through some of these issues. I have previously mentioned a proposed, and it seemed like it went over extremely well, but bringing up again is the possibility of a working session at some point between now and then to just really talk to and hash out some of these issues, I think that might be, this is a good example of some, of a situation that that might be very helpful for. In regards to just a couple of projects now, of course, regarding to housing, so last project, obviously, was developed before I came on board, I have my views about housing, and I don't think they're necessarily, I'm in the majority necessarily, in my view, I have my own personal views, my personal rationale for it in terms of affordable housing, and I think it's, to great extent, involves issues that are way beyond our, out of our control in terms of, you know, interest rates, in terms of supply chain, and even now, in terms of having a ready supply of workers, but that, be that as it may, what I, what I would like to raise is an issue, and I think it's not contrary, but I personally would just like to see even more emphasis on this aspect of housing in these years ahead, and that is with transitional and supportive housing. I'm not sure I fully, fully grasp all the nuances and details of those, but I've talked to so many people, I've toured so many facilities, and I'm pretty convinced in my own mind, if we really want to address the problems that we've seen on the streets of Albuquerque, if we really want to address the issues that exist in our community with addiction, behavioral health issue, that housing has to be part of that. It's great to have an affordable home, I, yeah, as a young person, I would love to have that opportunity to get some, and I don't, not against that, but in terms of where we got the most bang for our buck in terms of our community and community improvement, I just would like to strongly advocate for and suggest that transitional supportive housing be what we lead with, as a way to actually address problems that we see on the, on the streets of Albuquerque. That's just me. The other thing is, in terms of something that a good friend of mine has been advocating for, and I think hopefully is becoming part of our dialogue, and some, that is a rental assistance program, and it's not necessarily vouchers, but it's a situation where somebody is in need, because we did talk about addressing the homelessness issue, right? Well, we're not, one way to address it is to help people not become homeless in the first place, right? So to see some sense of that within our budget or within our requests to the legislature, I think is, I think is important and effective. And also, in my district, something I've been discussing, and actually a resolution I've been working on, I've been saying around to, again, to anybody who listened to me, I'm not sure that's a lot of people, but needless, I don't give up, is that there's a huge need for housing rehabilitation program in the South Valley, because it's very unique. And I say, so much, not just because I was born there, raised there, and live there still, but it's unique in this sense, that there's a high degree of homeownership without a mortgage in that community. It's one of the highest, if not the highest, rate in the entire country. And again, as I've said many times for this, this chair, it is because of how we generally, not always, but in many cases, how we distribute or transition property from one generation to the next. But just because you have a house and you own it free and clear, doesn't necessarily mean that you always have the income necessary to, to live in a safe environment. And on one hand, we do see some pressure from, and rightly so, from our zoning and COVID enforcement staff, which is non-opositive, and I totally get, but to be able to be in a situation that would help people stay in their home, and mostly what I'm talking about, I would say probably 95% of the people I'm talking about in this situation that are needing assistance are seniors, are people that are elderly, that are no longer working and living on a very restricted, limited income, and so I think to include that in our vocabulary and to include that into our request for the housing rehabilitation programs and mental system program, I think it really gets to addressing the heart of an issue, and it's something that's within our control, something that we can actually address. We, you know, we cannot change the price of lumber, we cannot change the price of metal coming in from Canada, there's things, the interest rates, I think people aren't buying homes because of the interest rate. Get the interest rate down to 3%, like it was a few years ago, if my son bought his house, you'll see, you'll see houses go on the market, you'll see supply becoming available. Anyway, that's just my personal philosophy, but I would, I have a K for, and again, I just hope that becomes part of our, our dialogue and our communication to our legislative delegation to include those as priority projects, as part of the greater, you know, ask for housing in general.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Benson, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Madam County Manager? No, Court?
I would wait till you're all complete.
Sounds good. So Commissioner Baca, I want to say that I think it may be worthwhile for us to explore with staff if there's a possibility of scheduling a working session between now and the 23rd, so, you know, I'll certainly commit to working with staff to see if that's something that we can come up with a time that works for us to get together and just have some deeper discussions, deeper dives on some or all of these, so we can explore that. What you just said, Commissioner, about the housing rehab really clicked with me, and it's something that I'm going to bring up at a later time in the context of Director Hamm's not here anymore, but the Coors Sector Plan, which I had an opportunity to read, the South Coors Sector Plan, and it mentioned that they, they estimated, I don't know how they come up with this number, but that there was 3,000 vacant, vacant homes, not vacant properties, but vacant homes in that area. And I thought, if that's right, regardless, if you extrapolate that number over the entire region, I think you could get very close potentially to the number of units that they say we're short. But you also have the added benefit of benefiting a neighborhood, right? Because you have a home that everybody's calling about, you've got people in there breaking in, stealing the copper, doing things that we don't want them doing in there. So I totally agree with you that that's a, perhaps an under-explored area, that, you know, if we can turn those properties faster, get local developers to invest in those, we can see a lot of benefit. I wanted to mention, of course, we have our interim lobbyists here, I also reached out to Mr. Dan Weeks, our county lobbyist, who has also been attending these interim committee meetings, as Commissioner Baca has said, and he often, I think it goes out to all of us, he'll send us briefs on the different interim sessions, you know, what's happening at the MFA interim meetings, and what's going on at the LFC, and all the interims. So I do think that it's important that we ask Mr. Weeks, as well as our interim contract lobbyists, Mr. Munoz and Ms. Lee, to kind of convene with, with staff, with us, if we do a working meeting or something, to really make sure that we're thoughtful of what's being talked about in the interims, and what has a good shot at being relevant, because it is a short year, you know, it's got to be on the call, or it's got to be a fiscal issue, so, you know, we're not as, we don't have to be as broad in our thinking, but I think that's important. A couple of things that stick out to me that I would like to see some thought about, because it was very, very early on, when I started as Chair and County Manager was just warming up her seat as well, we had a lot of tax issues come up with the legislature, right? Different issues around multifamily properties, non-residential properties, residential, mostly in the property tax space. And so I think giving some thought to that, and what is the county's official position? What would we like to see done with regards to property taxes and making sure that we have a fair and equitable property tax code, which I think is something that may be coming up, or it may just be something we want to stake out a stronger position on, because it was so many different bills in that area moving around. Another area that I have worked on in the past, and I think one of the comments, Ms. Court, and you're absolutely right, is the constitutional amendment for anti-donation doesn't seem to be going anywhere, and I have mixed feelings about that, because I am of the mind, and not everyone agrees with me, that we don't need a constitutional amendment, we could do this with some really targeted and innovative state programs. And so one of those ideas that I worked on with Senator Ivy Soto at the time was establishing a grant program to offer low or no-interest loans to nonprofits for capital outlay requests, basically, right? Another way to work around the issues that we have with nonprofits, which we're going to talk about in a minute, and funding their critical projects. So I think that may be something we want to think about again, and is that another way to crack that problem differently, thinking outside the box? And then the last one that I was going to mention that might be relevant, because it failed, was HB 145, which was a 1.5 billion-dollar bonding authority for state and local roads, and so that's one of our asks in here, is continued funding for that, we've talked a lot about roads and drainage tonight, and so oddly enough, that bill had a lot of support, but it failed on the Senate floor, well, it didn't fail, it just failed to be heard on the Senate floor. And so I suspect something similar is probably going to come back, but it would be nice to talk to our, talk to our lobbyists, everybody get together and talk about that, and see if it's something that we think is going to be relevant in coming years. Those are just kind of my top three that I was thinking about. I do think that the public safety priorities are really critical, and we need to stay engaged in that, because it's a very, it's a very important issue that affects our community and everyone in it, but it also affects our jail, our treatment facilities, right? What we do with regards to diversion and harsher punishments and the balance between those is really important for the community and for our actual operations, so. Any other thoughts, Commissioners? All right, so I'll make a motion for deferral to the 23rd of, oh, yes, I'm sorry, you're going to jump in.
No, no problem, no problem. I just wanted to make a recommendation before the motion, because it might influence it just a little bit. First, I want to say that I haven't called Mr. Weeks yet, but he's going to be in charge of the whereses, so I was teasing Commissioner Barbara So I was teasing Commissioner Barbara Baca about that yesterday. What I would like to recommend is that we can do three things, and then I'm going to have a request for all of you. The first is we'll work through Julie to schedule, you know, an hour or two discussion so that you can discuss your priorities, if we can do that before the 23rd. Instead of deferring the item, if you take the action to hear the item on September 23rd, then we won't need the extra two weeks or, you know, whenever that next meeting is. And depending on how fast or slow the, the state legislative process is, you can always defer it longer if you want to, but at least it gives us some marching orders closer to the time that, that folks are going to be asking for more specifics. And then the, the third thing is based on the feedback that we got from you is we'll work on, if it's comfortable for the commission, we'll work with the chair and vice chair to develop an agenda that gets to the root of the issues that you're most concerned about. And then the two things that we'll be asking of you is, one, we'll probably want to send out a survey prior to that meeting so that we get everybody's priorities, so there is something, at least a little bit of us starting to, to begin discussions, because, just to say this aloud, the reason that we left the current document in place was tonight to be able to do a couple of things. One was to let you know what was accomplished based on the priorities that you had already set. The other was that because this is a, my understanding is that the 30 days is really more focused on finance, the overarching issues that you raised, and I really appreciate, Chair, you raising the issue around taxes, because it actually brings me to my, the second point I was going to raise, and I completely forgot about that debate, which is that if we could get a survey to you, and I think to the other elected officials, because one of the challenges is us going and talking about something like taxes, not necessarily being clear what all of our partners are saying. So this may also be a way to get some information in front of you in terms of the priorities of our, of your colleagues as well. So that if we can do that workshop, get some wherethes written in some more comprehensive financial policies, if there are other issues that you want to raise relative to future legislative policies that are not necessarily financial, then it would allow us to start that process even earlier. Because what my goal would be is by next spring, to have a conversation about the four or five top policies that you all are interested in us pursuing. Because right now, we primarily focus on financial, which I understand why, but there may actually be some more legislative leadership that you would all, all would like to take. And I think the only way to do that is to get ready in spring, because what's happening in the committees is very important. It's more important if we're setting the agendas in those, you know, like if we were able to get in there and say, hey, can we get this discussed or that discussed based on the, the different types of committees or commissions? So I, I want to be much earlier, which is a little bit why we took the tact we did this time, because we didn't think there was a lack of clarity around some of the, the kind of high-level issues. But what I would request, so to say this, we'll get surveys out to your colleagues. We'd like to get surveys out to you, and I'll just ask for as much specificity as possible. That would be helpful for us, and to distinguish that which we think is part of this 30-day session, and then that which we think will be part of how we set the agenda going forward.
Thank you, Madam County Manager, and I couldn't agree with you more. I think that's, this is already significantly earlier, but I think you're right. Right after the session ends and we kind of see where the dust clears, that's when we should be setting our priorities, because in May, they start setting work plans for interims. And so we can drive that conversation to an extent if we're there, if we're asking about certain issues, or we want to make presentations. I think that that would be well received, so I think that that's absolutely right. And my intent was to make a deferral motion that would defer final action until the 23rd.
Great, thank you.
So wouldn't require any additional hearings based on what's already been published.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so that's my motion.
And we'll work on your calendar too for the work session.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion on the deferral? All right, seeing all those in favor of a deferral of final action to the 23rd of September, signal an affirmative? Yes?
Yes.
And that passes on a 4-0 vote. All right, Ms. Court, your last item on nonprofit and Burnley County Fiscal Agency.
You can go ahead and start, Kathy. It comes up late on the screen.
Oh, okay, thank you. Again, Kathy Court, Chief of Government Affairs. This next item on the agenda is a motion to approve for introduction an administrative resolution setting the following guidance for the administration of capital outlay grants intended for nonprofit and/or non-governmental entities. Number one, beginning with the 2026 New Mexico Legislature, Burnley County suspends acceptance of state of New Mexico capital outlay grants on behalf of a non-governmental entity or nonprofit organization for the purchase of vehicles or any asset less than $5,000 that cannot be capitalized and inventoried. And number two, all capital outlay requests for the acquisition of equipment, land, or buildings, or a contract for the design and/or construction, major alteration or renovation of a county-owned building, should receive approval by the Board of County Commissioners prior to a nonprofit seeking capital outlay at the New Mexico Legislature. Approval of the recommended administrative resolution would also rescind Administrative Resolution 2016-31. A little background for you, Burnley County absolutely does recognize the value of nonprofits in New Mexico that provides services that local government does not. Nonprofit organizations that focus on a variety of social services, educational, health, and community development missions deserve some level of local government's support for their funding requests when their capital projects are planned and well-conceived. At the same time, serving as fiscal support for such projects should be weighed against any undue legal, operational, and administrative burdens to Burnley County. Administrative Resolution 2016-31 was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on May 10th of 2016, and it was the county's, county executive's first mention of the administrative burdens placed on Burnley County when it serves as a fiscal agent to capital outlay grants intended for nonprofit or non-governmental agencies. The resolution, since its approval, has been largely ignored. Today, Burnley County manages 71 capital outlay grants from 2022 to 2025 that total $28.4 million that are intended for nonprofit organizations as specified by lawmakers in the New Mexico Legislature. Between April and July of 2025, a cross-department team comprised of deputy county managers, a legal team representative, directors, and staff members reviewed the county's role as a fiscal agent to nonprofit organizations that receive capital outlay appropriations. All team members have direct responsibility and/or the expertise to provide thoughtful feedback about current practices in relation to the county's role as a fiscal agent. The departments that were represented, were represented include the Capital Improvement Program, Real Estate, Fleet and Facilities, Operations and Maintenance, Parks, Recreation and Open Space, Procurement and Business Services, Legal, Accounting, and Risk Management. The team focused on three areas of concern. Number one was vehicles. We learned there were no annual inspections of vehicles or proof of insurance, no driver's courses had been required, two vehicle crashes within the last year with one vehicle being deemed unsalvageable, five speeding citations, lack of insurance on a new Ford F-150, and transportation of children and vulnerable adults increases a county liability and led to that discussion. In terms of number two, land, buildings, and construction, the use of a multi-award RFP process for proposals for land, buildings, or construction has led to an implied consent by Burnley County that it will own all the infrastructure and embark on the project. One notable outcome of the RFP has been that all nonprofit proposals have been approved, but no project for land, buildings, or construction has been fully funded by the New Mexico Legislature. Number three, we looked at assets and inventory. The use of a multi-award RFP process for equipment purchases has meant there is implied consent that Burnley County will own all the equipment, the result being that there is no knowledge of the status or location of thousands of items purchased since 2014 that cannot be capitalized because their individual cost was $5,000 or less. Some highlights of the report that was provided to you in your, in your packet. When we talk about 30 vehicles, 31 vehicles are currently leased to nonprofit organizations, six additional nonprofits seek to purchase vehicles with 2024 and 2025 capital grants. A note that we'd like to emphasize, all potential claims against a driver of a county vehicle would be filed against Burnley County as the owner of the vehicle. In terms of buildings and land, the county maintains 15 leases with nonprofits for services in lieu of rent. Burnley County's average cost of repairs on these properties per month is $6,801.41. The average cost of repairs between July 2024 through April 2025 is $102,021.10. Between 2014 through 2023, more than 6,000 items purchased with $43.5 million in capital outlay grants are in the possession of nonprofit organizations. Of these assets, only 56 are annually inventoried because the items had an individual cost of more than $5,000. Burnley County should assist nonprofits in the good work that they do in the community. We're asking for some guardrails around the county's role as fiscal agent. If approved, the proposed administrative resolution will assist the county to, number one, ensure that nonprofits who lease county buildings are working with the county to access capital outlay for needed updates and maintenance to the county-owned buildings. Number two, ensure that any acquisition of land or buildings accomplishes mutual goals that also help the county meet its strategic planned, plan. And number three, ensure that all assets that are purchased and become the responsibility of the county are capitalized and annually inventoried for audit compliance and generally accepted accounting principles outlined in the county's internal administrative instructions and the State of New Mexico Administrative Code. With that, I'll stand for any questions alongside County Manager Chavez. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Court. Commissioners, any questions or motions on this to start us off? Yes, Commissioner Baca?
I'll make a motion, but I do have a few comments.
Okay. Go ahead. Motion. Second from Commissioner Benson.
One thing I'd like to know, and I do appreciate the time that Ms. Court, you spent with me explaining this, and I certainly understand that the burden that it presents, I've been, I think I told you a story about being involved in an organization that served as a fiscal agent for many nonprofits, and it's just unwieldy, it's just so much. I would note that for our conversation, that, that although the resolutions have been ignored, the DFA has approved these transactions, and so that's just a fact. And then secondly, in regards to the vehicles, I just, a question, I think we talked about a little bit, but, but in terms of not providing or allowing for nonprofits to purchase a vehicle, our first block just seems a little harsh, but if I, but, and we did talk about, I don't think we reached a conclusion, but I don't think it would prohibit them from, rather than the vehicle being owned, purchased and owned, it would not prohibit them from leasing a vehicle from a third party, would it? The way this resolution is written?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Baca, the capital outlay grants we oversee all require the submission of a notice, what we call a notice of obligation, before we can spend down the grant. In terms of leasing a vehicle on behalf of a nonprofit instead of purchasing the vehicle outright, or allowing the nonprofit to lease the vehicle, and then us repaying or reimbursing the nonprofit the lease amount so that it's on the nonprofit, my understanding?
That's my question.
Yeah. That's something we would have to discuss with lawmakers and with the DFA. And, and I'll see to County Attorney Martinez as well.
And my, thank you. And my final question or comment is that, and again, I'm just asking, but has there been some discussion with the nonprofits regarding these proposed changes in terms of some sort of back sheet or letter or some sort that just goes out to all nonprofits is just basically say, these are, are changes that we're contemplating, we'd like to get some feedback from you? I just think that would be important to engage the, those nonprofits in this conversation.
Mr. Chair Levis and Commissioner Baca, I felt it was premature to actually raise that issue with our nonprofit partners. I have about 178 individuals on my email distribution list. It's easy for me to do that. However, I wanted to bring this before commission first and get more guidance from you as to how to proceed.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Commissioner Benson's next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Court, remind me how many cars?
31 vehicles.
Thank you. I, I think this is reasonable. $5,000 minimum, automobiles is a risk. I didn't realize, and I didn't realize how much money nonprofits were getting, and that's just Burnley County. It's almost $30 million. And it's a lot of money. And there's some, there's some nonprofits that do great work, and there's some nonprofits that don't. They're just, it's true. And I didn't realize how many cars nonprofits were getting. I had no idea. So I think it's reasonable, plus the administrative burden that we're responsible for. Yeah. I think it's very reasonable. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Barbara Baca?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A comment really more than a question, so we haven't reached out to our nonprofit partners as, as you've said, and that concerns me, and I get it, you know, you have to start somewhere. And I wanted to start by giving kudos to the interdisciplinary staff, you know, that came together and did this research. But I look at this, this report that I looked at pretty, pretty closely as a starting point, and I'm not ready to move on the resolution with those specific recommendations, because I really do feel like we need to bring more people to the table to discuss this with us. I've expressed this to our county manager as well. I mean, I was trying to read it from the, from the, sitting in the chair of the nonprofit who doesn't, you know, that, that needs assistance in how they proceed forward, and/or the nonprofit that knows what they're doing, and they go to a legislator and they ask the legislator, the legislator says, this sounds great, and they fund it, and they don't think about how it impacts Burnley County. So all of those conversations and those folks, I think, need to be talking about this, including people from the state, our legislators, so that they know about this. I mean, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Benson, about the number of vehicles, but sometimes that is what makes a nonprofit, you know, be able to do their delivery of meals or their primary purpose. And if we can put into effect our own rules and regulations for that inventory, for the training for those drivers, for all of that, you know, that's what we need to do. Because I go back to your first slide, and that is, our nonprofits do a whole lot for our community, and they are our partners in this. And so we really need to have those partners take a look at the work from the county's perspective, from the staff's perspective on, on what it means when we accept monies from the state to go to those nonprofit services, to let us know whether this will work in, you know, in their business operation. So I really feel like this is a good start, but I, I do feel like we need much more time to have this dialogue in the community. Part of, and part of that needs to be with, with the state representatives, whether that's DFA or even our legislators, who they like to do this. They like to give a specific amount of money to a specific nonprofit in their specific district that does a specific and important function with real outcomes. And we don't want to be setting ourselves up for unintended consequences or failure in serving those, those services that we, we have right now. So, so I think it's a good start, but I do think that we need an extension, deferral, and I think we need more than a month on this one. I think that- I think that there really needs to be a larger conversation with our partners in the private sector, in the private nonprofit world, as well as at the state. So that's, that's my thinking on this right now.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Baca. I have a question for you first, Ms. Court. With the $5,000 amount, saying that we wouldn't process grants like that, so I can imagine a situation where, and actually I think this is a real situation, the VIC, for example, was furnishing their building, and they received, I think upwards of a million dollars from the legislature for those furnishings, and I would imagine that most of the individual items they purchased were under $5,000, a chair, a desk, a table, maybe a computer, right? All of those things. So would we basically not be doing any of that, or would it just be if they got a, a grant for $4,000 and they wanted to buy one server or one computer? How would that work?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, to your example, most of the items we purchased with 400,000 of the $1.4 million grant would not have been capitalized because they were less than $5,000, and so this proposed resolution would say that we wouldn't do that anymore because we cannot account for the mattresses, the bed sheets, the lamps. In fact, we don't have the capacity, we didn't have the capacity to go check a $144,000 invoice that listed hundreds of items on it, because they were all less than $5,000. We, we're not going to tag them, we're not going to inventory them, and so we have, we, we have items there that we're not able to check annually to see whether they're still in the possession of the nonprofit, to be honest with you. So that's just one example, but under, and it goes to our AR. I think it's AR 006, which talks about what we determine to be a fixed asset is a $5,000 limit, and it's the same rule at the state. The state level has the 5,000. The, we do have, the state has another definition that they will capitalize an aggregate amount of up to 200,000, and we do up to 100,000. So for example, if, if a nonprofit wanted to buy 200 computers at a cost of whatever, I'm not doing my math very good right now, but the total purchase amount was $200,000 here at the county, we would be able to inventory and capitalize all those items, we just wouldn't do annual inventory on them. So, so we do have a few, like if it's a big bulk purchase that exceeds 200,000 but is less than 500,000, we would, we would notate that, we just wouldn't do any annual inventory on anything except the items that are $5,000 or more.
Okay. I, I think I have a, a good understanding of, of that. So I'm going to make some comments in, in that context. Most of the issues that are raised in here are, I think, very valid issues, you know, noncompliance with insurance requirements or training or, you know, other things like that. But the problem is, those were already the requirements. So we reference an AR, which I'm not seeing right now, but it releases 2016 administrative resolution that we passed, or we weren't here, I don't think any of us were here at that time. But the commission decided that it wasn't going to do these things and that, you know, staff and, and county shouldn't do this, or that they should do these things, right? To require certificates of insurance, to require regular site visits and monitoring, and we, the county, are not doing those things. We're not, you know, the county has not done regular site visits to monitor space usage at county buildings occupied by nonprofits. I mean, we own the building. It's not really the nonprofit's responsibility to tell us to come and inspect the building. Same thing with certificates of insurance have not been going to risk. This is already required of those organizations, but I guess we're not asking them for that. We're not, we're not prompting them and saying, hey, it's, and, and, you know, I issue certificates of insurance through my business to many of my clients, and every year, usually at the beginning of the year, they send me an email and ask me for an updated CI, and usually a W-9 or whatever tax info they need for the upcoming year, or sometimes they do it at the end of the year, when they're doing their taxes. So we're not doing that, that job at the county. And so I guess I'm, I'm a little bit perplexed how a new restated version of the old AR is going to solve these problems, because we were, and, and again, there's some areas where I think we're not doing our job. There's other areas where clearly the nonprofits are not necessarily doing theirs, like when they go and get a couple million dollars for a project and then come to us and say, oh, by the way, we got all this money coming to you, can you help us? And usually they're good projects, but, you know, they should, they should be communicating with, with us, the decision makers, policymakers, the legislators, they should be communicating with our staff, the people that are going to implement that. So it's not a, I'm not saying this is a one-sided thing, it's all on us, we're all bad, but I think this is, you know, the entire capital outlay process from the state on down is flawed, and this is indicative of that. And we play a role in that, right? Everybody's kind of guilty. So I think that's my main kind of overall concern is, is just how are we going to do things differently now that we haven't done in the past, where this is going to make the difference? And so, you know, my thinking on this is, is that, excuse me, this should be folded in to our larger conversation about CIP, our CIP ordinance rewriting that, changing that, because I think that they're interrelated. I mean, it's, these are literally buildings the county owns, or assets the county owns, that's by definition capital. So I think nonprofits should be addressed in the CIP ordinance, which they really aren't currently. I mean, the current CIP ordinance is really outdated and, and doesn't address any of this stuff. And so I think rather, for me personally, rather than doing this through another AR that's really just a restatement of the past AR, it, it, it would be better, I think, to fold it into that ordinance and really see how we can make some structural changes to our whole process that fixes things. And, and so I want to also, I want to end on the positive note, some things I really like in here that I think are a little bit different, is there's a mention of a county-owned buildings fund. I think that's a really good idea for our own facilities and for ones that we operate for nonprofits. How we fund that is also, you know, TBD, we need to determine that. But, you know, one of the things that's in the current resolution is that nonprofits are supposed to be paying a fee based on staff time, right? Your, your time, your staff's time for the services we render to them, and we don't charge the fee. So, you know, I, I see ways there where we can potentially capitalize that fund. I realize nonprofits are going to have something to say about that, too, and, and we should talk to them about that and understand that, but it benefits them in the end and their mission. So I think there's some really good things in here, some things that we should really lean into and, and be part of that bigger conversation. So I do not mean to say this is all bad. I think I support most of it, if not all of it, but we just, we need to figure out how we're going to actually implement it, so. I know you're, you're chomping at the bit there.
No, no, no. I was, this was really very helpful. You know, let, let me make an observation about how, why I think we are where we are. I think one is the fact that we had these rules, and custom and practice became not to enforce the rules, hasn't, also has a little bit to do with what happens when nonprofits get pressure put on them, or they, they want something, they go to you, and then you come to us. And I, I say that just to be very open about one of the reasons that I'm concerned about the, the point that you raised around, if we have these rules and we're asking nonprofits to come to a meeting, go to a training, fill out their paperwork, and we're, and we're really, really, really spending a lot of time providing support to our nonprofits in, in a way that I think is, is really admirable from the staff, but I think this became convoluted in part because we don't have good, clear boundaries around what, what we will and won't do. And I, and I want to get there, and so I, I'm really excited about the discussion. The second thing I want to say is, and this is kind of a bigger issue, there are very few counties or cities in the state that provide this service to their nonprofits to address the anti-donation rules. And the reason for that is that it's very costly, it's very time-consuming, and that all means that in addition to all the other work we're doing with nonprofits in terms of getting grants out and really wanting to provide support to them, we also have this other pipeline for them, and we want to be that pipeline. So I, I want to be really clear with you, that is not my concern. My concern is really having a set of standards that we have the support of the commission to implement, that is really critical. And I, I want to give you one example that I, I, I find kind of troubling, which is that when we got alerted to the fact that the state was going to take a bunch of money that hadn't been spent, sometimes for years, away from our nonprofits, we, Kathy, and when I say we, I mean Kathy, really jumped into action to try to protect their money, reaching out to them, write letters, make sure we have all the updated information. But for many, many organizations, what they do is, with all, what we all do is, we go to great, with great hope to the state or federal government, we fill out our little grant form, and what's different about what happens in the state than what happens when you fill out a federal grant, is when you fill out a federal grant and you ask for $2 million, normally they don't give you 200,000. So what happens is, we have a lot of state money coming in such small bits that the nonprofit can't use it in their lifetimes, and we don't, there's no work plan or a way for us to know, how do we help this nonprofit, who's an incredible partner of ours, get from point A to point B? And then that puts us in a situation where we develop a relationship with a specific nonprofit, we're helping that nonprofit move into a facility, we're using, act, you know, in lieu strategies, which I don't think are good ideas. I can think everybody who's in a building, if you can't pay a minimum amount of rent, the problem is, the health and vitality of your organization is something we should be evaluating, which is why we don't have sinking funds on all of these buildings. So all that is to say that I, that I, I hear what you all are saying to us, and I 100% agree that all of this eventually will fold into our capital improvement plan, but this is one very distinct lane, so we're going to need to be able to move as far down as we can on all of these lanes while we bring the, the overall CIP process back to you, because in some instances, what we have to acknowledge is that we're going to have state legislators call us and say, please put this group on your list, and they're going to want to give them $5,000 for a car. And we have to have a very shared understanding of what are the risks, what are the opportunities, what are the implications? So what would be helpful for us, and I think the feedback that we've gotten today is very, very helpful, I do think we would love to reach out to the nonprofits as well. I, I have a lot of questions for them. These are the basics that are really protective of us from a risk perspective, which we're focused very much on lowering risk everywhere we can. But the second is, how do we use staff time? And what does it take to really provide the service at the level we're providing it? The amount of service we're providing? We don't have enough staff to manage all of this resource for, for these groups. So we have a lot of different paths to take. I love the idea of doing a larger meeting with our nonprofits. I think you all raised, and I think you all raised really good points, we have to manage risk, and I think Commissioner Baca, you raised a point that is a really fair one, which is, we haven't talked to the legislative, our legislative partners, and, and candor, you know, I probably should have done that before we brought this, so I'll, I'll remedy that. What I would request is enough time for us to have a meeting with our nonprofits and to at least have a, a meeting with a subset of the large delegation we have. Leave what we have intact today, if you can give us, you know, six weeks or eight weeks, because if we do it that way, it would come right after we have our legislative priority session, you know, that might make, put us into the first week in October instead of, instead of September, but, you know, we're happy to do the legwork. And I do really want to thank the staff, this was not an easy thing for them to bring forward. They, you know, they don't want the nonprofits mad at them, they don't want you mad at them, you know, they don't care if I'm mad at them, so they brought it, no, I'm kidding. But, but I, but I think this gives us a very good place to start, and, and, you know, I'd like a little time and, to do our homework, and we'll come back to you with something that we have a little more input on.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Thank you.
And then we'll go to Commissioner Benson.
Thank you for that, County Manager. And again, I, I stated this, but I want to restate it, this is obviously a lot of work and a lot of hard looking at, you know, how we as county staff and, and the county sees the risk, et cetera, but it's that one-sided component. That's why I say it's a good start. So reaching out, and, I mean, asking our partners in the nonprofit world, they probably have some solutions to some of the quandaries that we have, that we haven't thought about because they're coming from the nonprofit world. So I think that there really is, trying to ask the right questions of them, so that's not just a, you know, like what are we trying to solve, and addressing that, and ask, ask those questions and get them to the table is really important. The other thing that's very important that you mentioned is, the state is working on revamping their capital outlay process as we speak, and we need to comport with those changes, so we need to be talking with the DFA, LFC, and I would even, I, I definitely thank some key legislators so that they can help us understand where they're sitting, you know, where they're coming from when they get a nonprofit knocking at their door, and they, you know, we don't want to put up too many hurdles for our legislators who have the funding for these great services that are provided by our nonprofits. So I mean, I'm reiterating, and I, I think though that we do need some time, and, you know, I don't know if we do an indefinite deferral, and you bring it back to us when you're ready, but I think that definitely we need a, a, a plan for how we're going to proceed, you know, with this, these next steps and these next questions of our partners.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think we should definitely bring the legislators in. I, I don't know that they even understand, and the, and the turnover in the legislation is so high that, you know, the, the ones that are making these grants now may be their first or second term doing so. I don't know, I don't know how much buy-in we'll get by asking the nonprofits how they feel about this, if, if there's an opportunity for them to lose access to funding. Yeah. But to your point, County Manager, $5,000 can be a lot of money. It can be a, it can be a big deal, and it can really help the community, but nonprofits shouldn't be solely reliant on the government. If they are, they're a non-government organization. There's fundraising, there's, there's other ways to raise revenue for nonprofits, and that's my concern. There, there are some great nonprofits in our community, and I've, I've worked with some that are just not good, but they get a lot of funding. And so I think bringing the legislators to the table, I think we'll get some really reasonable ears on that one. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so what I'm hearing here to, to sort of try to synthesize some direction here is, you know, I agree, the legislative engagement is key. When I presented to LFC a couple of weeks ago, this was one of the topics I raised, not this specifically, but that we needed to come together and tackle capital outlay because it's not an efficient process. And Senator Padilla, who is one of our LFC members and also the, how, the Senate Majority Whip, asked, asked me the question, and, and I think it was a very fair question, of will you keep us engaged in this conversation? It, it wasn't really, you know, telling us one way or another what to do, but to keep them engaged and keep them in the conversation, because they're looking at their process as well, so I, I think he's, he's a key legislator to reach out to because of his, his position on those committees, but also his interest in the issue, and, but I, I do agree, we need to do some education, and, and I know that's hard to do because legislators are very busy people, they're in all these interims and everything, but we need their help to figure out how we tackle this problem, and the nonprofits as well. But I think that my sort of reflection on this would be to present the nonprofit partners with the problem, more so than the proposed solution. I mean, we, we have a solution on the table right now, which is actually basically our current policy. now, which is actually basically our current policy. But I think if we present the problems that we're having, the challenges that we're having, and asking for their help, how, how would you propose we solve this? Maybe a good starting point with this being out there. And I think this is an important discussion point to, to have this resolution in this body of work, because it's, it's a good starting point. It definitely outlines the problem very neatly. And so, you know, I think talking to both of those groups could really advance this. So Commissioners, how do we want to move forward on this? Right now, we just have a motion for, a motion for approval. So, yeah, for introduction of, of approval. So we could defer this. I think County Manager's kind of suggesting like the end of October, maybe.
Well, what I would suggest is if, if you leave the motion on the table and have us report back in October with direction to meet with our legislative, our legislators and our nonprofits, and frankly, to have a broader conversation than what's just in front of us, is what I've heard. And what it will allow us to do is have a report back time. And we may have other suggestions at that time. And I, and I would just say, the reason that I would like the timeline in October isn't necessarily because we're going to resolve this before, even before January. But what I really want to make sure of is we're going past the January timeframe, laying the foundation for how we move forward. All of this has to line up with our CIP process coming back. So I'd like to come back in October, doing the outreach that you asked us to do, and making any updated recommendations that we find while we're out doing that outreach.
So, and I think Commissioner Baca wants to jump in, but I wanted to suggest, I, I do think we should treat this one a little differently from the last one. Because my concern would be if we, if we pass this tonight and move this to second hearing, then in theory, we could, you know, that hearing in October, we could approve this. And, and I think that that would put our nonprofit partners and, and even legislators in the community in the position of thinking that, that we may potentially approve what's before us on October 28th, which was kind of the date I was going to suggest, because that's when we, we have that meeting. And I, I personally don't really want that out there, that, that we could potentially take final action on it at that meeting. So it would really be a deferral of the introduction until then. Were you gonna?
I would agree with that. I would second the motion like that.
Okay. Any discussion? Or did you have a comment, Commissioner?
No, I was going to suggest the second meeting in October.
Okay. All right. Don't see any further discussion. All those in favor signaling affirmative? Yes?
Yes.
And none opposed? So that will be deferred for introduction on the 28th of October. Thank you, Ms. Court. All right, our last business item is item 9E, the Metropolitan Detention Center, fourth quarter true-up report, or request. And we have Warden Smith to present.
Good evening, Chairman Alievus, fellow commissioners, Madam County Manager. I'm Kai Smith, Warden, MDC. I'm here seeking a motion to approve for introduction a financial resolution increasing the healthcare gross receipt tax. Metropolitan detention center's medical contract budget in the amount of $686,192 for the medical, mental health services and MATS program. As you can see in front of your screens, we have gotten our true-ups for our fourth quarter for both medical, mental health and MATS. And we did have shortfalls in the amount of $686,221,000 of that being in the medical portion. And, oh, no, I got that backwards. And $465,000 in the medical and $220,000 in the, the MATS. The MDC Healthcare Fund is a pass-through account for the, uh, MDC General Fund, and it pays for, it allows for the payment of the bills going through to UNMH. The total shortfall funding is $465,117 for medical and mental health services and $221,000 for MATS program, again totaling $686,192 and 45 cents. There are additional supporting documents that were provided. And if there is any questions, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you very much, Warden. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Make a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion or questions? Warden, just to clarify for, for everyone else, I already asked you this question, but where is the funding for this true-up coming from?
So the MDC is funding it from within our own budget. Now that we're closing out some of our programs, we've worked with Deputy County Manager Reagan's team. And some of our projects that we closed out had savings, so we were using that to pay, to offset this.
Very good. I think that's very efficient and appreciate you for, for running the organization in that way. Kudos to the whole team. So, all right. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, signal in the affirmative? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that item passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last item this evening, we have 11A, our Fire Rescue Annual Report for Deputy County Manager Perez and his, uh, delegates with the Fire Department, Fire Rescue Department.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. Always a pleasure to be in front of you. What we are going to present this evening is our annual report for 2024 for fire and rescue. So the annual report was actually delivered to each of you digitally and I believe hard copy, just before we went on the July break. So plenty of time to, to have looked over that, that document. So with me this evening, I have our newly promoted Division Chief Rochelle Ordolano, who oversees our emergency medical side of the house, as well as our Captain Henry Wyatt Schichtel, who is going to be taking over the accreditation process. So as you know, we were accredited about two years ago. And part of the ongoing requirements of that accreditation is to provide you with an annual report that captures all of the doings going on within Burnley County's Fire and Rescue, from our call response times to staffing promotions, you name it, it's inside of the, the actual annual report. But in order for us to be able to publish this annual report to the general public, we have to have your approval first before doing so. So I'm going to turn the microphone over to Division Chief Ordolano to walk us through quickly the, the appraisal. And then we will stand for any questions that each of you may have.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. As Chief Perez, Deputy County Manager Chief Perez mentioned, this is so we can get approval, so we can do this as a public-facing document and actually publish out to all of our department members to review our statistics on where we're at, where we're functioning, what we're doing throughout the department, and show you our improvements, our goals, and our objectives for the county and the constituents in which we provide services to. In this document, we discuss what each division inside Fire and Rescue actually did in the year of 2024, what they established, what changes they made, and what their projection and goals were for 2025. We went through all of our actual programs, and we did the same on our achievements, community outreach programs, and the goals also for the next year, so we can make those improvements and constantly provide professional services to the constituents in the best way possible. We also outline our ISO ratings. And last year, we went through our, in, our inspection. And next year, we'll be able to provide what the new ratings are. We also documented our accreditation status, which we did get accredited, and identified our strategic plans, making sure that we are in line with our strategic plan and the county's strategic plan.
Explain the ISO, please.
The ISO, as Chief was saying, is our insurance rating. So that number is determined by the state fire marshal and another agency that determines the level and professionalism of our fire department and the services in which we can provide to the constituents on a regular basis. And that number will help determine the insurance ratings for the constituents. The higher the rating, the higher the insurance is for the constituents. The lower the number, the better the insurance rating is, because we're proving that we are a professional department that can provide professional and exceptional services to everybody within Burnley County and the surrounding metro area. We were at number three, and we had decreased it down to a number two now. So we've actually provided better services, and we have lowered the constituents' money on their insurance ratings. The other stuff that we do document is, over the last three years, all of our calls. And then it breaks it down for the year of 2024. And it goes over all of our fire responses, our medical responses. It breaks it down by each station, by each district, by each region, and the overall department's call volume. If you guys have any questions, I stand for questions.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chief. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have one. On the ISO ratings, you mentioned like an overall county-wide rating. Are, are those ratings also assigned, like, in regions or neighborhoods?
Chair, Commissioners, you're correct. They are by, by each region. And I'm, I'm having to go through my head here. I believe, I know for a fact, we are a three in the East Mountains, and we are a two in the North Valley. And we just last week received the report for the South Valley, and we dropped to a two there as well. So those are all great numbers. It's rare across the country for a county to receive an ISO rating of a lower than a two. Typically, you see larger cities that will come in as an ISO one. Albert Creek Fire Department is an ISO one. And really, the prime reason is water or access to water. We've got a lot of rural areas that still do not have hydrants, and that is the number one factor that holds us back from receiving that level one rating in the ISO area. The other piece I would add that, that is a benefit, and Shirley loves this piece, is it gives us more money from the state as well. So it's not just that it lowers the insurance rates for our, our customers or our, our community, but it also generates more revenue from the state in the, in the state fire fund that we receive. So this year, we increased by about $800,000 by going from a, from a three to a two. And that will all go to continued operations within the fire department, which prevents us from having to ask for more money every year from the general fund. So it's a, a true win for everyone involved.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that response. And it drives me just thinking a little further about what I was up to earlier today, and I won't go into details on that. But with regards to fire protection in the East Mountains, you know, you and I have talked about this, we're never really likely to get to a two or definitely a one out there because it is so rural, water is so limited, that the vastness of that area is, it, it's very unlikely. And the issue that we're confronting, a lot of my constituents, is many people can no longer get insurance or insurance they can afford. And I don't think we're going to build our way out of that problem in the sense of more hydrants or more water or more fire engines. So I really think dovetailing back to the conversations we just had, right? Last year, one of the items that, that I believe died on the, somewhere in the legislature, was some changes to the state's insurance, high-risk insurance formula, however it is they, you know, provide state subsidized insurance for homeowners, property owners that can't afford or can't get insurance. And, and we actually have homeowners in the mountain region that cannot get insurance anymore. And that's a huge, a huge risk to our community. I understand why, frankly. I, I understand it. With the changing climate and the fires, it's just too hard to, to predict. But something that we need to keep our eye on is, is how can we support our residents in, in other ways, in addition to your department. So, thank you, Chief. Commissioners, Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the Fire Department is a great way of, of supporting those individuals. There's bigger problems, but, I mean, there's problems that require bigger solutions. But you guys are amazing. I mean, the call volume, you guys are dealing with medical and non-medical. Before I was Commissioner, I called you guys, and you guys were at, at our house in, I think, under four minutes at 1:00 in the morning. So, I mean, you guys are, are excellent. So keep up the great work and, yeah, keep fighting to keep everybody safe in spite of lack of water, which is a bigger problem, and you guys are, are stepping it up to the plate. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Frankbuck?
I'd just like to note that...
Your mic.
Just like to note, I just happened to get the option to go to the grand, the grand opening of, of the new station, I think, aptly named Station Number 66, if I'm not mistaken. Designated so by my predecessor due to the road, which I thought was probably a good idea. And, but the facility is, is amazing. The, the planning that went into that, you know, heck, I'd like to live there myself. I mean, if I was young, I would probably want to go into that field. It's such a cool, you know, the way it was organized and the thought that went into planning it. It was just, yeah. And then the location, very strategic, from going west to the detention center, but also going from that point, you know, you have a strategic launch pad to serve the entire west side. So I, I just want, I just was, I was just very astonished and appreciative of the thought that went into planning that, that facility.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you for, and, and your whole department.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, everyone. I just wanted to say, I don't do this often enough, just a, a big thank you to our staff, especially Julianne and Javier, making all these meetings happen and dealing with all the last-minute changes and everything that comes up. Appreciate you. And all of our staff on the, the tables up front here, our, our senior leadership, our county manager, and everybody that makes this building run. Just wanted to give you some appreciation and thanks. With that, Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, we have a 3:00 PM zoning meeting right here in the Kent Sanchez Commission chambers. And after that, at 5:00 PM, our regular administrative meeting, again, Tuesday, September 9th. If there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.